I call this board meeting of Haver Public School District sixteen and eight to order. Will Kelly please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will a clerk please dispense with the roll call as all board members are present?
Yep, everyone is here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, welcome to the April eighth meeting of the Haver School District Board of Trustees. A copy of tonight's meeting agenda is on the table near the door. At this meeting, the board takes official action on agenda items. Items of information and discussion may also be on the agenda. Comments will be solicited solicited from the audience throughout the meeting. Following introduction of the agenda item, the board chair will recognize those who wish to speak up to the item. If you have comments, please come to the microphone so that the board can hear you. Following input from the public on a given item, board may ask questions, then public input will cease and board deliberations will begin. Please note that the board is bound by ethical practice, district policy, negotiated agreements, and Montana statute to protect the privacy rights of the employees and students. Therefore, comments which might be construed as evalu- evaluative of the performance of a district employee are not allowed in an open meeting. The board has developed policies and procedures to process concerns about programs, curriculum, learning material, and personnel. Uh, the public will be given an opportunity to bring to the board general questions and comments immediately following items of new business. In the public comment portion of our meeting, board may not take any action on matters brought to the attention of the board during this period unless specific notice of that matter is included in a properly noticed agenda. Therefore, in the public comment portion of the meeting, board will not discuss or take any action but may refer a matter presented to a future agenda. Thank you for attending our meeting. This is our best turnout of the year. So, thank you everyone for coming. Um, presentations, Mr. Gump?
Yes, Danielle, would you like to come up?
I've worked with Pam Tackett for five years now in kindergarten land. Throughout the five years, I've learned so much from her and regularly asked questions and advice. She makes amazing connections with her students and her students know they're cared for and loved. Kindergarten is the first year of school that lays such an important foundation from the foundational skills of reading to a love for school. She always provides a safe space and helps students learn the most that they can while meeting their needs that they are not always met in their home life. Her passion for teaching is clear through her everyday interactions with students. Her ability to work with students that need extra, anything extra is amazing to see in action. The district will be losing a great teacher this year as her life and family plans are moving her to Great Falls. Whatever school she ends up at is very lucky to have her because she's saying goodbye to us at the end of this year. I feel as though she needs to be recognized as the amazing teacher she is and all the differences she has made in many children's lives for these reasons and many more. Pam Tackett deserves the Pony Pride Award.
It's it's a bad, it's a bad trend. Um, I believe Mrs. Breckus has a presentation from the Lincoln McKinley students. So if you are ready. Yeah. For those um, new to our meeting, every month we have um, a different school bring a presentation to us to highlight some of the exciting things that they're doing in their school. Um, whether it's academic, it may be a big performance that they have. Um, so this month it's Lincoln McKinley and she's got some students that she's selected to come and give us a presentation. I'm not sure what it's on though. Other than we have Chromebooks.
That's it. And whiteboards.
Oh. Well.
Should we grab Jeremiah? There we go. Okay.
Uh, do we click? Would it be better for us to come out?
You could. Yeah, if you'd like to move around so you can see it.
Mrs. Breckus, is it better if we come out here so we can see or? Where have you been?
Like you guys to see is gonna be on those computers that our kiddo show you.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a couple graphics up there, so it's up to you guys. I'll let you move if you want to. Um, or for your next. But yeah, hello everyone, um, school board. Thank you so much for inviting us um, to this meeting tonight. Last month, we had the pleasure of listening to Mrs. Kreiner and her youngsters at kindergarten and first grade read to us. And reading is one of the most important skills that we can teach our little kids. And right after that, I believe it is mathematics. So, um, today I wanted to take the opportunity to present to everybody what our kiddos have been doing in the area of math this year. And I wanted to focus in on one particular program that is new to us this year and just how much that has benefited our students and just how much improvement our teachers have seen with this program. So this program is called Reflex and, as the picture shows, it is a math fact fluency program that is very engaging and interactive and the kids absolutely love it. It is a research-based program that provides interactive ways for students to practice their fluency facts. Students who use Reflex are scoring higher and growing faster within their grade level work and assessments and state standardized tests, which is um, we'll see some of those tonight. So what our kiddos do is at the beginning of this program at the year, um, they went through a basic assessment and it calculated kind of where their fact fluency was. And this is just with addition and subtraction facts. We had over eighty percent, eighty-one point five percent of our kids were between zero and fifteen percent fluent with addition and subtraction facts. And that's our numbers zero through ten. Ten plus ten is twenty is the highest that they went to with this program. But as the year went on, they were gaining in their fact fluency. So this is where we currently are. Right now, we have, I believe it's seventy-six kids that are one hundred percent fluid in addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, and that's in second and third grade. So as the year goes on, those green bars are growing towards the right and they're getting smaller on the left to show where those kids are gaining their fact fluency. And if we put the two together, we can see the progress that they've made so far this year. We still have, what, eight weeks left? Seven or eight weeks of school left? So we expect to see those green bars grow higher and higher this year. So, what's on the next slide? Yeah, what does this program look like? And that's what we wanted to show you tonight. So next to each one of you is a computer and we have nine phenomenal second and third graders here to show that to you. So kiddos, come on down. So we have our. Make sure they all logged on. I thought I had names on all of them. Jake.
Oh, this one's Jake.
That one's Jake. It's this. McKenzie. McKenzie, I'm gonna have you here. Right here.
Um, I have Peyton.
Right here somewhere here. Jake. That's yours. Alexis.
Big Mrs. Breckus will tell us in just a minute. Jake. Well, Jake, you do. Jake, can you do it twice? Can you do it twice? Maybe? How you doing? Two minutes. You're better than me. You're like the same. He says he's better than you.
So as these kiddos are getting logged in, um, I'll just briefly explain to you guys kind of what this program looks like for our kiddos. Um, what they do is they would log in. The first time they log in, they take that math assessment. It places them where they're at. They don't all start at the same spot. If they've already mastered something, they don't have to go back through it, which is where we saw those varying heights of those orange bars. And they would first practice with their math fact fluency with wherever the program has placed them. And that's the first thing that they are going to demonstrate to our board members and McKenzie will demonstrate to all of you guys. They have to practice so much that they earn themselves a green light. It's takes about six to fifteen minutes depending on the kiddo and the lesson. And once they get the green light in the upper right-hand corner, now all of these kids have earned their green lights today by practicing in this program. Oh, look at that cute little avatar. Isn't that wonderful? Um, up in that right-hand corner is her green light. But they get. Oh, they test typing speed too. What's right, what's wrong? Um, they get to play a math game at their level. And the program, what it's doing now is it's detecting how fast they can type and what their errors might be with typing. So it can factor that.
Way to go. Have a good time.
Then they go into that practice where they would earn their green light by answering questions where they're at. This young lady has division. The kids sitting next to her might have addition. They might have addition up to a certain number. And every day these games change for these kids, so it's not the same thing over and over for them. And I bet if you as school board members look at a computer that's not your student in front of you, it's gonna look a little bit different. And after they've done their lesson for the day, they get their green light, they earn coins, they can go into a place where they can pick whatever game they would like to play. And most of these kiddos have unlocked all of those games.
Let's do this. Ready? Ready?
And they all had different games that they liked.
Yes.
Great work earlier today. You're ready for the game. Get in there.
And in these games, they earn coins. But you'll also notice within the games, they're practicing that math fluency again.
There you go. Well, that's why it's called school.
Most teachers use this in the classroom anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes a day, which is plenty of time for the kiddos to get their green light. And if they get their green light, they get to go on and play these these games, picking whichever one they like. And kiddos, if you're done with your games, you can show them your store. In their store, they get to spend their coins and they get to purchase things like the cute little avatar that we saw when McKenzie logged in.
Bonus.
Different words. Missed it. Where's the story? Put your avatar.
And while they work through these programs, they also have certificates of achievement that they can get printed off for them. Um, once they get one hundred percent complete with addition and subtraction, they get a certificate at one of our awards assemblies and then a hundred percent fluent in multiplication and division. They will get another certificate for that. So right now McKenzie's in the store buying things for her tree. And yes, they wear headphones in the classroom most of the time. So be a lot of noise. So we're gonna take the next few seconds, if you would, please kiddos, finish up what you're working on, but stay where you are. We aren't done. You can close your computers though. What's that? Embarrass you? No. No.
Anyone?
Yeah, so we saw all of those components. What the students had to say about Reflex was, it was challenging at first for them um, to get going with it, but then after that, they really liked it. It was really exciting to them. It was something new every day. It was challenging and best of all, it's better than a worksheet. Oh, boy, I can't spell. That should say about, not boyte. Sorry. What teachers had to say about Reflex? Um, our teachers had pretty much the same things to say about them. They like the idea that they used fact families. They incorporated addition and subtraction to show how those were related. And the image that we see off to the right, um, the dark green is what they're already fluent in, so they've mastered those facts. The light green is what they're not fluent in and they will continue to work on. Um, they really liked that it was tailored to the students. And all of the teachers at Lincoln McKinley, which would be our second and third grade teachers, were able to tell that these kids are using less finger counting, less number lines, less touch dots. And these math facts are becoming just basic recall, muscle memory. As the students move throughout the program, we have a pyramid for addition or for fact families for adding and subtracting and then multiplying and dividing. Again, the dark green is what they've already mastered and the light green is what they are working on currently. So teachers know exactly where each kiddo is. Or they can break it down to just one operation and see exactly where those kiddos need to focus. Um, it is a student-driven program. You can see just how many days a week the program is used. We like it to be used four days a week. Um, if we're using it with fidelity and the max amount of fact fluencies that they can gain is three hundred twenty-five. So this student would be one hundred percent fluent in addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. Um, the teachers have noticed going through their second and third grade curriculum when we're adding and subtracting multi-digit numbers with regrouping. It was a lot easier this year than it has been in years past because of this program. Yeah, and there's the things that we're seeing less of. One teacher said in her twenty-five years of teaching, this is the best addition she's had to her classroom. So it's really working. It's really helping us. Um, read really fast, so we're going to the next slide. Yeah, so just one program. This program does focus on just that fact fluency, but it does really help with all content standards that we have um, to introduce, to learn, and to master within second and third grade. From beginning of the year to middle of the year in just second grade, we were able to gain our green and our blue is where we like to see our kids. Um, so we did gain quite a bit in second grade, which has a lot to do with your adding and subtracting of multi-digit numbers with and without regrouping. In third grade, you're gonna notice that we did gain some, but they're more focused on multiplication and division of those multi-digit numbers moving into um, measurements, currency, and time as well. So the test that they take um, to measure these isn't just adding and subtracting like the first ones were. But our overall test scores for our state standardized tests, which the state likes to see, we had twenty-two out of twenty-three, or sorry, twenty-one out of twenty-two kids in one certain class master their multiplication and division equations on the state test. And that's where we're going to see those big results um, that we want to with the kids. So this one was multiplication and division equations. The next one, multiplying and dividing within a hundred, which the program does. Again, twenty out of twenty-two students had a hundred percent on that, which is phenomenal. And our last one that I threw up there was concepts and multiplication and division, which looks into your word problem. So not only are they getting the facts, they're being able to apply that terminology um, as well. But if you aren't convinced yet, Jake, this is where you were right. Yes. Yes, we wanted to show you firsthand just how well these kiddos know their math facts. So if you guys would, you have little whiteboards in front of you. Board members, are you ready? We're gonna do a little challenge. We are gonna have the students compete against the adults and we are going to see if they truly can remember them. So, board members and kiddos, you guys get the same instructions. Number one, there's no doodling on your boards. Those boards are for answers only, okay? Um, our students are gonna be on one team. Our board members as adults are going to be on another. And the first person that shows the correct answer, whether it's an adult or a kid, that team will get a point. Okay, at the end of eleven questions, hopefully we'll have a winner. Don't worry, it should go quick, guys. Everybody has whiteboards and markers. Once you are ready with that answer. No, you cannot use your phone. Phones need to be put away.
Are you just my phone? I don't think it, I think they beat us.
My goodness, my goodness. Do they all work?
I had to test.
I said no doodling on your boards.
It was testing the marker.
Oh, my goodness. See? All right kiddos, do you each have a board? Board members, do you each have a board? Do your markers work?
Told us not to doodle.
I, well, I did. You're right. I know. So first one, are we ready?
There we go. There we go.
Ready? All eyes up here?
Seven.
Oh, one point for adults. That was Jake. Number two, are we ready?
Yep.
Everybody erased? Everybody ready? Oh, that was kind of a tie. I don't know, that one says four hundred eighteen. Okay, we'll give that one to kids. Ready for the next one? I can't give you guys too many toys because then you would be playing with those and not focusing on the lesson. Ready?
No idea.
Kid.
Idea.
Two to one.
Seven.
Eight. Did you see the next one already? Switch them up now. Ready? Kid.
Think you're probably.
Call me out, audience, if I'm wrong. Uh, I might be a little biased towards the kids, yes. Aren't they cute?
Hold on, you don't even know the question yet.
We don't know the question. Oh, my goodness. Are you guys?
You're showing us. You showed it around.
Goodness sakes. Ready? Kid.
Pretty had it on there.
Ready? Ready Jake? Keep distracting Tyler. Kid. Bomb board. You got one. Too much work, goodness sakes. These kids have mastered these. Ready? Kid. Oh. There is a lot. Think of how the kids feel.
Can I bring my accountant down?
No.
Use as a calculator.
Ready? Adult. Ready for the next one? Am I still showing you the questions before? Okay, good. Oh, that was a tie. Get an adult. No one's out.
This guy's trash talking hard over here.
Yay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Oh, adults. Five to three. Ready? They are still winning.
That doesn't matter, we get one.
Kid. It was like all of the kids. Last one. Kid. Kids? Kids win. To three, let's give them a hand. All right, thank you kiddos very much. Um, I think there's still some cookies over there. I promised them cookies. I didn't know we'd have so many people tonight. And you win an imaginary gold star. I'll get you the real thing tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thanks, students and parents.
Uh, Mrs. Breckus.
Um, let's grab our.
Parents, thank you for bringing your students tonight. No, you can stay, but if you would like to leave and your child is done presenting, you certainly can.
Thank you, Mrs. Breckus and students from Lincoln McKinley. It's nice to see the programs that you guys are using in school. Okay, our next one is our report from student council.
Hello? All right, so they're definitely beating me in that. I was trying to do it off her computer and I was unfortunately losing in my head. That's all right. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Havre High has just begun the fourth quarter. Our sports teams like track, tennis, and softball all recently started and have all competed amazing so far. Prom also did well in March. I talked about it last meeting. And they generated money for both the seniors and the junior class. Our royalty were myself, Queen being Emily Leeds, Prince being Tyson Brandon, and the princess being Paloma Padilla. So alongside our school, our FFA team went to the state FFA convention in Bozeman. Sorry, this is really in my way. I don't know how to fix this.
Just bend it.
There we go. All right. So they went to Bozeman and represented well for Havre High. Our mechanics team placed first, and they'll be heading to nationals. The marketing plan, uh, marketing plan team placing third overall. Sorry, my handwriting's really bad, so I'm struggling with this. Scholarships have started rolling out for the seniors in Havre High, with some receiving the MUS or Montana Unified City System scholarships. So the MUS Honor Scholarship is a four-year tuition waiver with an approximate value of $20,000, and five of our seniors have received it. The MUS STEM Healthcare Scholarship is worth over six, or was worth $6,000 over four years, and 13 of our seniors have received it. So that's really good. I signed up for one of them. I got the STEM one. Those, I mean, five, I guess, is a pretty high amount for the honors one, the one I mentioned previously about the 20,000. It's a lot of money, so that's good for some of those seniors. All the sports teams I mentioned previously all compete this weekend. So I wish them luck if any of them are here. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Koda.
Hey, and now our Masons have a grant presentation for us.
Thank you, board. My name is Dave Sagasor. I'm one of the local members of Havre Lodge 55 here in Havre. I'm also state representative for the Montana Masonic Foundation. Since 2015, we've given away close to $700,000 to public schools to help them out. $100,000 of that was just this year alone. It's mainly focused towards music, drama, science, and library and other areas of student enhancement which suffer cutbacks or startup concerns. This year, Ms. Mrs. Jade Miller put in for $1,000 for some special needs items for the library. We actually delivered the check last month so that you guys could go ahead and get those items on order. And they put us on the agenda tonight so we could come do the big fancy presentation check. She already got her letter. I turned it into Robin's building. The foundation also sponsors the Bikes for Books and Kindles for Kids program, so we help out the younger kids, providing incentive to help them learn how to read, so. The foundation also has a museum down at Helena. If you haven't been there, it's quite interesting. They actually have Meriwether Lewis's original Masonic apron on display and the trowel that laid the cornerstone of the Capitol Building, so. If you haven't been there, you should go. So, is Mrs. Miller here? Well, I gotta keep this one, but I printed you one so you could hang it up in your classroom.
All right. Beautiful. Thank you.
Somebody take a picture for us?
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Masons, for what you do, not only for our school, but across the state. It's great to see that you guys are staying active, and you guys are making a difference with the bikes for books and the Kindles. Those are motivators for kids, so thank you very much.
I'll mic for a second. I just, I put together just a thank you for the Masons because I really appreciate that they awarded us this grant. There's also rumors going around the vicious fourth and fifth graders decided to tell everyone that I won the money and I took a vacation, which I am now on maternity leave, so it doesn't look good. So I just typed up what we actually use the money for, and like I said, it was for our adaptive library program. Those are the high-needs one-on-one students. That way they have exposure to the library, so we got a lot of really cool story kits so that they can really interact with the literature, and I think it's gonna really improve the program for them because they aren't necessarily the nicest to our books in the library, so we have different options so that they are still able to read books and interact with the books. And I'm just really excited to get the ball rolling on this stuff. It's starting to come in the mail, which is perfect. Again, thank you guys so much.
And you guys do this every year, correct? Where there's an opportunity to apply for these?
Yes, the, the, the grant, they start receiving proposals. They'll start accepting them October the 1st. It closes on December the 31st. If you go to the, if you just Google Montana Masonic Foundation, a copy of the form is on there, and I can provide the school board with copies of the application form if you like. Please, please ask again. I think you guys got two of them last year, one for some welding machines and and the local lodge also funded some stuff for one of the special ed programs, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Part of the foundation.
Yeah, last year I think we got it for our industrial arts class up here and then one of our second grade.
Second grade, is that correct?
Yep. So, thank you for, for those contributions. They are making a difference. Our industrial arts program up here is really taking off even more than it was before, so thank you. Um, our Havre Public Schools Education Foundation.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Trustees and district administrators, my name is Todd Hanson. I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Havre Public Schools Education Foundation, completing my 11th year as a member of the board. I wanted to share a little update with you tonight. Myself and my colleague Kyle Leeds will be providing some information. We did provide a handout to the board, which you have in front of you to give you some sense of the organizational highlights for the foundation over the last year and a year-to-date this year. Just some background, 25 years ago, the foundation was actually chartered. And when it was chartered by the initial group of Board of Directors, it had three primary purposes for programs that we supported, and that is our scholarship program, our small grant program, and growing our financial endowment for projects and initiatives either in the district or in conjunction with the district. For 25 years, we've done, I think, an extraordinary job of managing those programs. Just anecdotally, this being the 25th year of our scholarship program, which I'll talk about in more detail in a moment. But over that 25-year period of time, we've awarded more than $750,000 to Havre Public School students, so. As indicated, the foundation's Board of Directors in this last year is taking an initiative. As some of you may know, we've been doing a lot of event-based fundraising in the community over the last 25 years, from golf tournaments, softball tournaments, our New Year's Eve gala, other events that we've had over the years that are event-based fundraising enterprises. This last year, after a significant amount of conversation and discussion at our board table, we decided to take a new approach. We will no longer be actually actively engaged in event-based fundraising as the foundation. Some of you may be aware that the one marquee event that we did hang on to for a significant period of time was the Fossil Festival or the All-School Reunion. We've now enlisted the help of a number of community partners who've taken the lead on that event or are coordinating it and are anticipating that there will actually be an all-school reunion here in our community over the Labor Day weekend of this next year. So we're playing a supporting role in that going forward. We're not the lead on that. We're assisting wherever we can with our institutional history and knowledge of that event, but we've given it to the community and they've taken off with it. And so we're very encouraged by what's happening under that particular event that used to be under the management of the foundation. This year, we implemented, adopted and implemented what we call our new 5% Plan Giving Initiative. Some of you may be aware that in the next two years, the transition of generational wealth in the history of Montana will be larger than it's ever been. So businesses being transferred to family members, farming and ranching being transferred to family members on a generational basis. We're gonna see an enormous amount of accumulated assets and wealth that are gonna move from one generation to another. Unfortunately, even in our state, the tax consequences of that type of wealth transfer are significant for both parties involved in that, but especially those that are holding the asset and wanting to transfer it. In working with the Montana Community Foundation, we have identified an initiative which we call our 5% Plan Giving, and it's intended to identify those benefactors and those donors who fit within that demographic that are gonna be subject to that transfer of wealth. And we're asking them to identify 5% of whatever that transfer would be that would be consumed in a tax liability. And by giving us that 5% through a plan-giving strategy, either initially in a lump-sum amount over some designated period of time, we believe that the amount of money that we can generate is, if we're successful and when we're successful in that initiative, will be significant for our community. We've got over 150 scholarship programs that we've identified that we would like to grow through that process. Everything from FFA scholarships to a variety of different vo tech, ag, hockey, you name it. Scholarships that we don't currently have under our management. Growing that fundraising effort for us would put us in a position to grow those scholarship programs. So we're, we're very excited about that. The initial framework of the new fundraising strategy has been adopted by the Board of Directors, and we anticipate full implementation of that program by the end of 2025. With the integration of this new fundraising initiative, the foundation Board of Directors has elected to limit the scope of the organization's participation in planned event fundraising. In addition, additional program support, just some highlights there. For the past four years, we have provided some support to the individual school student food and clothes pantries that exist at each one of our five schools in the district. So we've given those administrators a card with $500 on it that they can use at their discretion to support the needs of individual students in their buildings, whether it's clothing, or whether it's foodstuffs, or whether it's personal hygiene items. At their discretion, they have now $500 and they have had for the past four years. So we've given over $2,000 to each schools over the last four years to provide some support around that gap that the principals have identified and the district has identified in supporting those students. So we're very optimistic that that program will continue. We look for more funding opportunities to maybe grow that beyond the $500 mark per school, but right now, we're pretty comfortable with telling you that we believe that there's a lot of sustainability under that program in the years going forward. In mentioning our scholarship program, I just want to touch on a couple of things. We manage a robust and growing financial portfolio of scholarships that are available on an annual basis to our graduating HHS students. For the past three years, beginning in 2022, we awarded more than $48,000 and was given out in scholarships. In 2023, we awarded 26 scholarships for an additional $35,000. And then again, in 2024, we gave out $33,000 in scholarships to over 40 students. So although the aggregate amount of the scholarship awards hasn't increased yet significantly, we are distributing them over a larger group of applicants within our district. So where before we were awarding 26 or 27, now we're awarding up into the 40s for scholarships. So we're, we're spreading that scholarship support over a larger group of students. I am happy to report that we believe this year will be someplace between $35,000 and $40,000 in scholarship awards, and we've just closed that application process. We have 36 applicants that are going to be vying for scholarship awards in our district. So we're very proud of that program. The last thing that I wanted to touch on was our small grant program. The foundation's small group program is undergoing an organizational reboot as a result of the increased demand for financial support from HPS faculty and staff. The foundation is revisiting the eligibility criteria of that program, which guide and govern the types of projects and the associated monetary support that we provide. The effort to recalibrate the scope and the scale of this program is ongoing and should be completed by the year's end. In the interim, the Board of Directors continues to receive, review, and award funding to small grant applicants across the school district. Once the new funding framework and formula is complete and adopted by the Board of Directors, the foundation anticipates increased opportunity to fund broader range of institutional requests on a larger scale. What we have found is that traditionally, our small grant program had a cap on the award of some place between $1,500 and $2,000. And for a number of years, that seemed to be an adequate filler for a number of our staff who are looking at smaller projects in their classrooms. With rising costs of everything, a number of those programs now are running in the $6,000, $7,000, $8,000, $9,000, $10,000 range. So in order to make sure that we have the capital and the resources available to fund those requests, we're going to have now two programs under our small grant program. We'll have our traditional model where we award up to $1,500. And then once a year, we're gonna take applications district-wide for those projects or those programs or those special purpose initiatives that teachers and staff within our district identify that are above that small grant program cap. So we anticipate that by the first year, we ought to award a couple of those in the $5,000 to $10,000 range. And then in years going forward, our focus is really on maximizing that initiative program and making sure that on a yearly basis, we can award a significant amount of money under that program and get it directly into our classrooms, meet the needs of our students, and making sure that we're filling those gaps where they exist in either programming or resources. We are, as a part of that process, developing new partnerships and new relationships with corporate entities and vendors out there who have access to the kinds of products and resources that our teachers are identifying. So we're very excited about that opportunity to bridge that gap for the school system, grow that program. We've had great support from the board. We've had great support from the administration. We've had great support from the staff. And so at year 25, and my colleague Kyle is gonna share some other information with you, but I guess the report that I would, I would have as a, as a long-term member of the Board of Directors for the Havre Public Schools Education Foundation is not only are we a is not only are we alive and well, we're thriving, and we're gaining momentum at a time where we're just kind of getting our stride at 25 years. I anticipate we'll have at least another 25-year go, but we are actively providing services to the community, to our families, and to our students. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name's Kyle Leeds. I'm the second-longest-serving member of the Board, and I think I've got nine years now on the Board. Just want to talk a little bit about where we're at with our initiatives and then where we're at as far as the operations of the Foundation, the staffing of the Foundation, and the leadership of the Foundation with you. As far as our initiatives, one of the best things that we're doing is, and it came out of the MOU that we've developed and we've had that is in enforcement right now, is the fact that we've set up a committee. Superintendent Gumm last year set up a committee that was set up to develop the relationship between the school district and between the Foundation to develop initiatives that we can work on with board approval. The board directs us to work on it because our goals get directed, if they're not self-made from ourselves, then they come from the Board of what you want us to work on for the district. And through that committee, we've come up with three really strong initiatives to start working on that will be presented for you to approve, I think, at the May meeting, or maybe the June meeting. I can't remember. But Mr. Gumm will present them so that you guys will have them in your packets to get approved. But I don't have all of them, but one of the most exciting ones is because we've seen such a tremendous usage of the dual-credit program at Haver High School and Haver Middle School, that we are going to help try to go out and try to secure additional funding so we can keep offsetting costs for families. The district's done a great job with achieving grants to get it through the state and through other sources, but we're going to go out and see if we can work together and see if we can find additional through industry and through other partners to do that, grants included. I will tell you that right now, with the makeup for the Board, our grant-writing capability is very low because all of us, except for one member of our Board, have full-time jobs. And so for us to be able to devote time to write grants is going to be a little tough. So we're going to have to partner with organizations like Bear Pod Development and others to try to get us the help in the grant-writing area to try to... Unless they're fairly easy grants, and then we can do some of that. But that's one of them, and then there's a couple others we're working on. We'll bring those to you. We do continue to work with the district and the Board to identify funding sources for projects that the Board of Trustees have requested assistance with. The classic example, I can give you that Dakota talked about a little bit earlier, is the FFA program. When that got approved three years ago, or four years ago by the Board, when it started three years ago, the first thing that we all looked at each other on the Board and went, where are they going to have the financing to fund the program for the first year? So we were able to go out and get a $10,000 grant for seed money for that program from the Brown and Kimball Foundation. So then that money, now you've gone from three years to having a championship mechanics team that's got a chance to win a national title and bring it back to Haver, Montana. And I know that... And I know that trustee Dale Vega's students at MSU Northern have been a big help to these mechanic students. I don't know if you've been helping them as well. You probably have. But they've been a big help to helping these students, and so that was there. And then we also were able, with the FFA program, we were able to secure a $7,500 grant a couple of years ago for the greenhouse that now is located at Haver High School that they put together, and they did a great job with that because they took all the students in the industrial tech department and they had everybody work on it. And it's kind of been a cool project to how everybody's worked together, collaborated to make that work. We also maintain a presence with the FFA program through the Foundation as trustee Hanson and I, or Director Hanson and I, both serve on, or both are on, the Friends and Alumni Group that's with FFA, that supports FFA, which I know Chairman Shealy's on as well. And that's a group that we're helping with, and I actually had a conversation with Mrs. Denton today, or Ms. Denton today, about a potential speaker for their banquet coming up and how maybe we can offset costs of bringing that speaker in and things like that. So those are things that we continue to work on. And then we also, if there's technical assistance that we can provide, whether it be making connections, whether it can be trying to find grants. I sent the superintendent today, back in 2023, the legislature set up the Montana 250th Commission to honor the 250th anniversary of the United States in 2026. And I sent Mr. Gumm some information to send out to the history and social science teachers in the district for some events that are starting up that could, over the next two years, that group's going to be running a lot of events. They're going to have a lot of resources that teachers and things are going to be able to bring into their classrooms. So I sent that to him so we can start making contacts in the district with that. So that's the type of things we try to do. Fortunately, with what I do for a day job, I have access to a lot of things, and I see a lot of things that I can share with information because I do a lot of reading in my job. So you find out a lot of, you find out a lot of stuff when you're trying to get a background on things. As far as we look at the staffing and the leadership and the operations, the operations of the Foundation, the Board is trying to work to make things more efficient right now. We're looking at revising our committee and subcommittee structure, trying to recommit to the core operations of the organization and staying in those roles. And I think with the information and the direction we're going to have from you, that will help us achieve that. And then we're trying to streamline organizations. There's probably going to be some things we're going to start outsourcing just because it's going to be better for us to outsource it than it is going to be for us to do it ourselves, and which will help streamline. Working with the Montana Community Foundation will be one of those things that we're going to do because not only are we going to work with them on the 5%, but we're looking at some things with our endowment program to work with them on and things like that. And then also with some financial things and whatnot. As far as staff, we're going to change the role there. We're not going to, when we hire again, we're not going to hire an executive director. We're going to hire a managing director. But the Board is starting to work on what that position looks like, what the requirements are going to be. Is it going to be part-time, full-time? My guess would be it's going to be part-time to start like we used to be, just because we have to be a working Board. And so we're going to look and see how that and get a managing director that can align with our goals. One of the things we talked about last night, because the majority of the Board got together last night to start the scholarship processes, really, we do need a managing director to work during the scholarship process because it's a lot of work to get everything done. We're going to get it all done, but it's hard for all of us to do it because we're all working full-time. So if we can get a managing director that can be the point person on our scholarship program, that's going to help out quite a bit with what we do. And as far as the leadership, we do continue to strategically try to find new members. We brought on three new members in the last two months that have been volunteered, and it's kind of nice because they're from all kinds of different workspaces in the community. We've got one that joined us from the food and beverage industry. We've got one that joined us from the trucking and construction industry. And then we had one that joined us and works in healthcare. So that has been nice. Also, just recently had a member of the community who is in the construction field, is big on CTE, who's actually visited with Mr. Nits and Mr. Krasky about potentially doing some stuff at the high school. And he's looking forward to potentially joining us, so we're kind of communicating with them. But what we would say is if there's anyone that's interested that's in this room or you know others that are interested, have them call me. Have them message me, have them send an email to the Foundation. I'm happy to talk to somebody, sit down one-on-one with them, tell them what we do. But we're trying to find specific skill sets still that can better the Foundation, better the work we do for Haver Public Schools, its employees, its students, and its administration. And with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for the update on where you guys are at and where you guys are going. Now we're on to the outstanding achievement part. I believe this is probably what most of you are here for. The Board of Trustees wishes to recognize excellence in Haver Public Schools. The individuals, teams, or groups selected for this recognition must undergo a nomination process. Tonight, we would like to recognize the following students for their outstanding achievement during the 2024, or 2025 school year in the areas of wrestling, swimming, girls' basketball, and boys' basketball. This is probably one of the larger groups that we've had to do, and that just goes to show all the work that you guys are putting in. And we just want to recognize how much work you guys are doing. So with that, Mr. Gumm, do you have anything?
No, we just appreciate all the effort you guys put into Haver High School, right? And to be nominated and selected as an All-State recipient says a lot about your character and your ability to be leaders on your team. So thanks for being here tonight. I think how this is going to look then, Mr. Shealy's going to read off the certificate names, and then trustee Heilmann will hand out the certificate. So if you'd please come down and then, before you take off with that, just kind of stay down here. We're going to get a picture, and we'll wrap it up.
We'll do it by, I'll read off each section, and then we'll try and get a group of all of the sections over here for a picture, if we can do that. So we'll start with our wrestlers first. Pierce Kaplet, All-State Wrestling. Gage Chapman, All-State Wrestling. Matt Lamer, All-State Wrestling. Brandon Healy, All-State Wrestling. Tommy Lewis, All-State Wrestling. And Isaiah Otto, All-State Wrestling. I believe we saw a few of you boys four or five months ago for football as well. So congratulations on being multi-All-State selections. That goes to say a lot about the work you're putting in. Next, we'll do our swimming. We have Micah Cameron. Wrestlers, if you want to come over here, and then we'll take a big group picture.
There you go. We'll kind of slide her on the back.
We'll scoot forward. Next is Elizabeth Carroll. And Miriam Carroll. Ainsley Cornidge. Eric Messenger. Toby Prepputton. Liliana Smith. Ray Lynn Smith. And Daniel Tillman. Next is our girls' basketball. We have Ariana Gary. And Amaya Jarvis. And for the boys, Trey Gary. You'll give us just a moment. We will get a group picture over here on the seats, and Mrs. Bits will organize you. Yeah. Right. Are there any agenda deletions or corrections?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
With that, we'll move on to the unanimous consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on it? Oh, well, I guess. He may have just slipped out. There he is. I see him. He's out there visiting. Okay. Well, we're going to continue because we have a forum. So I guess we'll just note that he didn't vote on that. Are there anything that you need to highlight or point out in the...
Not on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
If there's no other questions on it, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve unanimous consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Lorraine and seconded by Kevin that we approve the unanimous consent agenda as presented. Does any member of the audience wish to speak to the motion? Does any member of the Board wish to speak to the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimous. Agenda item C1.
Yes, there's no changes to the Safe Return to Schools and Continuity of Service Plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. To the next one.
Yes, so this is item D1, Indian Policy and Procedure Parent Feedback Opportunity. So Katie Marcinko, during the last week in March, and Katie's here tonight, sent out packets of information included in your Board packet to Rocky Boy and Fort Belknap Indian Reservations. So we had to properly make sure that we noticed this opportunity for parents to come speak. Last week, Holly Bits, myself and Katie had an IPAC meeting in which we visited with several parents, kind of talked through, as you know, we've been visiting about, kind of in your packet, is our Indian Education Plan, and it has a lot of subsections in there that talk about like our application process for ImpactAid, right? It goes over like the EZ Grant, which Katie and I and Moses work on, which provides a lot of funding for different activities that we run throughout the district. We have a powwow coming up here in a couple of days at the middle school. So it kind of breaks down all the different things that are included in this. Along with that, also included in the packet is the Indian Policy and Procedures that we adopted several months back. The big picture with this whole plan is to provide parents out on the reservations the opportunity to come in to Haver Public Schools, share with all of us their thoughts on activities or education that we could do to improve our offerings here within the district. And so we've tried to cast out a lot of information through a variety of platforms in an effort to then have our parents come in and just share with us thoughts for the future. How this would look is I'm going to open it up for any opportunities for parents to come talk about if they see areas that we could improve upon. Holly's going to take notes and kind of jot those down. Then if we are approved for ImpactAid, the process in a year from now will be that we take the suggestions from the community members, and then we would give a report back to our Board in terms of what we've done with those suggestions moving forward. So with that being said, if we have any parents out there that would like to come up to the mic and give us some thoughts on this packet, again, this packet was handed out at the IPAC meeting as well as to the reservations directly. So if we do have any parents in our audience tonight that would like to speak, feel free to come down during this time. Doesn't look like we have any at this time, Mr. Chairman, so.
Is there anything that you want to highlight for us?
You know, just, I kind of did a cover page with this, and I spoke with the parents of the IPAC meeting on this. Really, Katie, who's our Indian Education for All in Title VI Coordinator... Really Katie, who's our Indian Education for All and Title VI Coordinator. So she's just really done a lot this year in terms of our district, whether that's with the activities. We've also instituted building coordinators within the various buildings. Their role is to help support Katie with any areas she needs in terms of curriculum or activities that are going on within Indian Education for All. So really the entirety of this program, I feel like over the course of this year, we've continued to improve upon our level and offerings for our students within our public schools. So she's been doing a great job. I'm excited that we've reinstituted the building coordinators because I think that helps with the efforts in the individual building. So yeah, that's probably about all. But yeah, it's a good program moving forward.
Is there any chance? Hello, hello.
Try maybe right at the top, Jake.
Is there any chance that we can do anything to help improve correspondence?
You know, I know it's one that Katie and I talk about too. With just, I think, I think it's all the various platforms that we try to push out information, right? And so we're trying to use, whether that's Facebook, whether that's the district website, whether that's email, right? And the preferred platform that we're using right now for this particular document is email. And so we've been pushing out a lot of information. I think we just continue to try to notice meetings. She's putting on like, for instance, the powwow, which is coming up. I'm hoping that we get some good support to come to the powwow. And so we're just always trying to look at angles and avenues. We sit down, meet my office on ways to generate more participation. But it's just an effort kind of that we're working on right now.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to D2.
Okay.
Vending machine contract.
Yep. If you remember at our March lunchtime meeting, Sarah and Justin were here from Sundance Estates. And they wanted to move forward with the approval of their vending machine contract. If you remember, Andrew Hansen previously owned the vending machine for this, sold the vending machine and business to Sarah and Justin. And then the contract that is provided in your packet is the revisions they have with just basically some name language changes in the contract. But the contract itself that was approved by Montana School Boards Association is the same contract. Principal Krasky and I have had some conversations regarding the vending machines in the high school. They seem to be popular and the students are using them. However, my recommendation for this is just to extend this contract for the remainder of the school year. And then at that time, I'll visit with Principal Krasky and we'll talk about any recommendations moving forward.
So on bullet four, on the term, would we just, would we change that to? Change that to the end of the school year?
Correct.
With the intent to see where we added it at that point and see how.
Yep, see how it's working. Yep, yep. And like I said, after a visit with Dustin, as the school year wraps up, we'll probably have some information we can share out then in terms of any future thoughts with it.
Do you also have any questions or comments on vending machine contract? Any member of the audience or do they have anybody here?
There we go. Yep. Sarah, would you like to speak on it? Do you have any questions?
I don't. I think last time you guys presented and you answered some questions at the last meeting when you initially presented it for us to review for this meeting. So there's nothing new.
And then Sarah, kind of our initial thought moving forward was that way, as you know, as this has kind of changed hands and just kind of see how the process looks. And then, like I said, after a visit with Dustin, then our thought would be moving forward into next school year that we would just kind of align a contract that ran the duration of that that we could look at yearly and just kind of see if that continues to be a good fit. Like I said, this was a unique circumstance because you guys kind of took over midway and so. Yep. Right. Yep, yep. Perfect. Any questions for Sarah?
If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item D2 Sundance Estates vending machine contract with the changes to section, section four, that it would remain in effect for the remainder of the 24 and 25 school year.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Garrett and seconded by Tyler that we approve agenda item D2, the Sundance Estate vending machine contract with changes to section four to read, to remain in effect for the remainder of the 24, 25 school year. Does any member of the audience wish to speak to the motion? Does any member of the board wish to speak? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimous.
We'll, we'll, we'll get you a copy of the contract then.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item D3, disposal of property.
Yes. All right, here we go. So I recommend the approval of the disposal of property resolution to be held either onsite or online on June 14th, 2025. So over the past years, you can imagine Harvard Public Schools has acquired a lot of extra items, especially during COVID. As you can imagine, there was a reservoir of items that were purchased to help educate our students during this time. And then like a lot of things happen with technology, things become outdated and then you end up just warehousing these items. So we are really at capacity in most of our buildings as well as the basement of Robbins. So we thought, you know, just doing our due diligence, it is probably time to kind of move out some items that are no longer in circulation that we really use for anything. So we're going through the process. I've got right now Scott and Aaron researching the online sale versus the in-person sale. If we do the in-person sale, as you notice in your resolution, it would be held at Haver High School, our practice field up at the high school. If we do it online, we're going to go around, take all of the pictures. The key part with this resolution is it has to be posted 14 days prior to the sale. So we would have all of those photos with minimum bids online, ready to go for people to take a look at. The advantage of the online sale versus in-person would be, it would be a lot easier for our maintenance crew then to go through. And if the items that are not sold, we have the ability to just move forward and dispose, right? So whether that was specific steel at the dump, we could just move those items out after going through this process, right? If you notice on the back of the resolution too, I've included policy 7251, which talks about with a vote or without a vote, right? So we're coming to you tonight with a vote in this policy to approve this resolution so we can move forward with the sale. I met with my administrators. We felt that if we go with June 14th, schools wrapped up, right? It would be a lot easier for our crew or people to be able to get into the buildings and actually move out items than certainly it would right now. So all we're asking for tonight is your ability to approve this. And then Moses will make sure that we have it noticed properly 14 days before this would go out, so.
Would members of the public go on the website to view the?
Yes, they could. Yep, yep. And so we'd notice all that properly so that we'd let them know if we do decide to do the online, good question, Kristen. We would have all the notices on how they would allocate that.
I would assume all the items are operational to be an auctioned off.
Depends on what you mean by operational, Kevin. There's like some old iPad carts and things like that that probably need, you know, some work. I know Aaron would strongly be an advocate to say any of the old technology items that were, you know, we'd be selling Chromebooks, things like that. It's just kind of minimum bid and it is as it is, right? We wouldn't have any warranties or guarantees with any of those items, right? As that's why they're on this list to go out the door.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion. There a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Tyler and seconded by Kristen that we move forward with item D3, disposal of property resolution as presented. Does any member of the audience wish to speak to the motion? Does any member of the board wish to speak? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimous.
And I'll let you know when we have a final on whether that online or in-person is going to go. So I'll be able to come back at the next board meeting and kind of give you an update on exactly where that is.
Okay, D4.
You bet. So this is a consideration of a revision to the eighth grade participation in high school sports. Couple of years ago, before I came, right when I was coming on to Haver, I guess I should say, I met with my new administrative team and we kind of talked through what is eighth grade participation going to potentially look like at Haver Public Schools, right? So the recommendation that I have before you tonight was follows in lines with after we met as a team, that original recommendation, which was recommending approving the eighth grade participation rule for all sports at the high school level excluding football and be applicable for varsity level competition based on lack of student numbers, right? So that was the original proposal. You have it before you tonight as I received numerous requests from our board that they would like to see this policy back in front of them. Over the course of the past two years, there's been different situations that they've seen occur. As it stands right now, our policy is, is open outside of football where eighth grade students have the ability to come up and participate. And so that was how we finished out a couple of years ago. Then a lot has happened maybe since then. We've been able to see this policy in action. Look at the positives, the potential downfalls to any policy, right? I don't think this policy really ever has a one size fits all perfect setting. But we've navigated it as is the past two years. Today, during our administrative meeting, I talked with Mark and Heather, right? Who are in the activities director roles of both high school and middle school. They had some additional thoughts with this and I think it's important to, to keep in mind with this again, that we want to hear just kind of a variety of perspectives, right? As we move forward with this, we want to do the best by all of our kids, right? As I see some of our coaches out here in the audience. The intent and the intent of our school board is to really generate a policy that makes the most sense, right? And is in the best place for all of our kids at Haver Public Schools, right? So their intent moving forward with it is in the best nature of your kids as well. So know that. With that being said, if I could have Mark and Heather maybe come down and share some of those additional thoughts you have with our board so they can have kind of the, their best knowledge base, I guess, moving forward with this before they make a decision.
Not going to be able to share the mic. What was the question?
Just maybe kind of share with them your thoughts that you, you talked about today at our admin meeting on moving forward.
Yeah, there's no perfect, you know, complete policy when you're dealing with an eighth grade situation. But it's not something that's going to go away. We've navigated it pretty well, I would think, over the last couple of years. It affects each program differently based on the number of kids that you go out for each program, whether it be volleyball, girls' basketball, wrestling, whatever. The impact of, of eighth graders participating is different. But we are actually going to be facing something that I think needs to be considered before any action would be taken on the current eighth grade rule, the way it is versus other proposals that might be brought forth. In that our middle school scheduling is going to change and Heather may want to talk a little bit more about that, but we discussed it this weekend. And I was glad that we did simply for the fact that if our seasons are going to change and some of them, volleyball in particular would run concurrent, then that could change some things and it might require us to look at our policy, you know, with a different eye or a different set of circumstances, I would say. And that won't be known for another week or so as Heather has a meeting, I think with her league, other league ADs with the current league that our middle school teams play in, which is the same as the 1B teams, Fairfield, Conrad, those guys. So they're, they're opting to move their seasons to flow very similar to their high school seasons. Much like happened to us 10 years ago when our league that we were in, which was Malta, Harlem, Glasgow, those teams at the time when they switched and followed. And that caused quite a bit of change for us. So anyway, I think, and that could change again, even from what Heather knows, when that meeting takes place, there are other things that could happen. I just think that, anyway, my perspective would be we would want to know for sure what we're dealing with because that could really impact our middle school program significantly if, you know, if we're not sure what we're dealing with and that it's going to affect a few other things. Coaches who, who coach middle school and high school, when those run at the same time now, that's, we're going to lose some coaches to, to have to fill some shoes there as well. So there's some other things. Just kind of like to know what we're dealing with completely before we would make any, any change at this point.
So currently my girls' basketball program is in the fall with boys' football. And then my girls' volleyball season was in the winter with boys, right after boys' basketball and right before wrestling. And now my girls' basketball and girls' volleyball seasons are going to be switched. So girls' volleyball will happen in the fall at the same time as high school girls' volleyball at the same time as football. And then my girls' basketball season will start in December and run into January at the same exact time as the high school girls' basketball program. So it really will affect a lot of girl participation for the high school and the eighth graders and my program as well. I don't know. I really don't have a whole lot of information for you other than that because my meeting's on Wednesday next week.
And the way, and the way the rule currently reads, they are not allowed to participate in both high school and middle school. Is that correct? And if, if they're, if they're concurrently, if they're running at the same time? And if you quit high school, you can drop back down and play middle school, but then they're not allowed to come back up into high school. Is that correct?
There's also could potentially be some overlap where if you started out in a girls' basketball season in the middle school and then the season ends and girls is still going, there are schools then that some of those kids will come up and now play up in the high school to finish that particular season because now they're not running concurrently. Okay, so it's really different with a lot of different schools. That's where we would see the most effect potentially is because you can't play concurrently. And what we're seeing and what Heather's seeing and we've noticed that it's been, you know, a negative trend is just the participation numbers overall anyway. I don't know what the perfect plan is. I just know that with these changes, I think we definitely want to look at it under the microscope a little bit more and come up with, you know, something that is effective for the high school and the middle school at the same time. And that could be potentially what we already have. I don't know that, but I mean, it's just something to consider before any changes made. A concern that I heard over the years, and it must be a lot better now, is that getting officials to ref the games is no longer a problem. Yeah, I wish that were true. And they have them, they're putting them all at the same time. I thought before they split that because of the lack of officials and.
I thought before they split that because of the lack of officials and. Let's, I'm not gonna say that's the only reason, but that was one of the reasons.
Officials and the lack thereof is going to be a problem no matter what your seasons look like. They're a problem now, they would continue to be in some circumstances, it could be a little bit more tricky, you know, for basketball especially and volleyball. Uh, the other consideration I mentioned was the shared coaches, but uh, facilities is gonna be an issue. Because we share our facilities a lot for uh, you know, sub varsity games, middle school use quite a bit. We host a lot of their bigger jamborees because they, you know, we need the two courts that the high school can provide. So we're gonna run it, I mean, scheduling's gonna be, have to be careful as well. So it, yeah, it could be interesting, but you know, in the end, it's something we'll need to do. We need, we'll need to discuss it, we need to find out, you know, how do we still provide all of the opportunities for games and competition for our middle school? It it could look a little different and in some ways it might open up some more opportunities for other programs that have already moved. Into those different timeframes in the fall with volleyball, you know, that could open up. Uh, the potential for us to play schools that we played in the past that we don't anymore because we're not at the same time. Just really need to look at that, we don't know how that's gonna be yet until we know for sure what's coming.
Are those the only two sports that you're looking at altering the potential timeframe of?
And Kevin, that's why I thought, you know, in light of the conversations we had today, it might be good just to have them share out the information with all of you. As I know this is a big decision for everyone, that way there you you kind of have some time to take in the information. One of the tools you have, um, certainly you could also table this item if you decided to for another meeting. If you felt like, hey, you wanted to provide some more, a little more time to have some more information surface. And then move forward, if you feel comfortable, you can continue to ask questions and make a decision tonight.
I I feel the people we have in the positions probably make the right decisions. Rather than delay it, that's the way I personally feel. And I really doubt if they were the two that were out there pushing for all these changes, I think they're probably reacting to them, so. You gotta work with the people, won't you? Participate with.
So Heather, just to clarify, has the decision been made to swap them or you guys are discussing them next week and then a decision will be made?
The decision has been made to swap them. We are now going into this meeting to discuss how that's going to affect everything and what the schedules are gonna look like.
Okay.
Coach Wade, we had seven girls end the season on seventh grade basketball this year. Right, but those seven, but those seven seventh graders are going to be eighth graders next year, so there's going to be seven of them. So if five of them decide to play high school sports, I have two girls for a basketball team?
Because we need the same. Well, we are probably hurting.
Tommy also did not have a full squad at the high school either.
There's, there could be unique scenarios in the sense of, let's say, we only, we didn't have a lot of girls at high school either. We had a couple of eighth grade girls that filled and still then uh, at the fullest roster, we're at 21, but. Think what Heather is saying, let's say we had s- seven eighth graders, they come up from seventh grade. And we have 16 high school girls go out. We could very much use almost all of those eighth graders and then that leaves zero at the middle school level. The only other, well, the only other option hope for is that perhaps like many other schools around us do, a lot of times when we play. Because as we talked about this at our meeting, our eighth grade teams often play a mixed team of eighth and seventh and maybe even a sixth grader. They're already blending because of the number, you know, the smaller schools that we might play. So seventh grade teams made up maybe mostly of sixth grade because a lot of the seventh play up. We could potentially have to do that as well and and we could, and I don't think that would be a scenario that would happen all the time. But I do mention that we have seen and and not just in Haver, it's all over that uh. The number of participants for certain girls' sports has dropped a little bit, basketball is one that's really come up on the same level. Travel teams, a lot of things that have used kind of, it's, I don't know. Just different things have affected it, that's only one. To try to get those numbers back, I'm not sure, and we talked about that too, how do you just get more kids to even come out confident? Yeah, with all of that in mind, it might have a better picture of what we might be dealing with. But for any kind of.
I guess I'd like to point out some things is uh. When you start looking at all the different sports like wrestling, I know I've hauled them around and. My boys wrestle that stuff and there's a lot of open weights. But people don't realize is that four extra go to state on top of all the varsity people. Okay, so there might be, all hypothetical, some real good wrestlers that are eighth graders that can beat. Some of the other ones or the weights are open and four extra wrestlers make a heck of a difference on team scoring. Remember going to one tournament, one point made the difference in the state championship. Unfortunately, Haver was on the short end of that. Um, you look at track, I mean, you could have five girls in an event, let's say they're all Haver, that counts towards points. So you start looking at the individual ones, tennis, um, I, it's kind of endless on. Know if there's a couple that are really good that could go up and play, they could make a difference. But likewise, it all comes down to the numbers, do you want to take them up if it means you have to forfeit? And I think that's a decision that be hard to make as a board because you could never cover all of. And I'm talking about my opinion, I'm not speaking for any of the other board members.
Thank you.
It'd be hard to come up with the policy that's gonna solve all the problems because. We have, it would have to change every year and uh, yeah, you never know what the next scenario is.
Each year could be different.
Yes.
And really the only. Thing it affects is the girls volleyball and girls' basketball because right now my boys' basketball season is a hair earlier. Than the high school season, so I had my eighth graders, they all played, everything was fine. And then I had three of them go and play for Wayo and there was one week of overlap there where they were finishing their middle school season. And the high school season started, so that was fine. Um, my basketball season was in the fall, they could play basketball and then go and play basketball at the high school as well. Um, and my wrestlers, my wrestling season ended after high school wrestling was over. Or my season started, excuse me, after high school wrestling was over, so those eighth graders that wrestled up came and wrestled for me. So really, it's just the girls volleyball and the girls' basketball that we're really looking at right now.
Yeah, and I.
For the major conflict.
I remember I was a new board member, I think, when this policy come up and and uh. Seemed like it was just, you know, to go up and play in certain events. Or if not events, certain sports that were short, but. I don't remember if it was a mostly at varsity or whatever and the, I remember Mr. Kroski come down and talked about, well. Hey, then I don't have enough people on my freshman team, not allowed to bring anything up or anyone up. The way the initial policy was, I think that was true, but things changed, so. There's, were they short players and the boys when they brought the three up? Okay.
No, the the way the policy read, what we did is, and and I'll speak, you know, the support line, varsity coaches, that's all of our coaches. You know, their job is to build the most competitive program and team that they tend. And the way we had, we have a criteria we follow during a cut program and certain kids, eighth grade, you know, if they score higher. They made the team, we had a lot of kids go out there, I assume for boys' basketball, we had, we had a few eighth graders that made it. That scored potentially quite a bit higher than kids that didn't make the team, so. I mean, yeah, you're not gonna get a perfect system, it it isn't, but it was, followed the, you know, the. Policy as it is, and that's something where, you know, with our different coaches, we had a a heck of an impact in refs and few with our eighth. It's really helped that program, it scored a lot of points for us and. For us to be competitive, I mean, if, you know, that was something that helped us in that sense because a lot of the other schools were doing the same thing. And there is, like you said earlier, it's not a perfect, it is gonna be kind of a year to year thing. And it is gonna be, you know, the coaches are gonna have to have a good voice in that and work with our administration on how we can best. You know, make this work, but also, you know, know that you don't want to negatively impact our younger programs either. And I I don't think that's anybody's attention, it's just, we're not, yeah, we're seeing numbers that have dwindled a bit, that is impactful, you know. We're gonna have to figure out how to work around that a little bit and hopefully get more participation as well.
No, one concern that an individual. Um, talked to me about, it had nothing to do with Haver High, but this individual was a baseball player. And he was a pretty good one, so I think he was in eighth grade or something like that. And he was playing, we'll just say Legion, um, I don't remember all the particulars, but the comment he made. I don't know if they were the best influence on me. Um, I think the high school probably has the coaches in place. That would make sure that things aren't out of whack, I would hope for lack of better. Words, I guess, um, there are some cases where maybe that is the case, but baseball, I believe, was always in the summer and had nothing to do with the school. And I know from driving the bus. For a bunch of trips, there's, I only remember one time when I thought things like, wow, it's not a good influence, but you talk to the coaches. I assume it's taken care of. I wanted to address that just because one individual did bring it to my attention.
Jake, you got something? Yeah, I guess I would just like to know whether the primary, uh, what's the primary reason for revisiting this? What what problems have we seen and what are we trying to accomplish by revisiting this? I guess would be my, uh, you you had said that a few board members had asked to uh, to revisit this, so. I guess I would uh, would just like to hear some of the concerns, if anybody wanted to share those, I don't know, but um, that's what I would like. If anybody wants to share that, maybe not. So I know we've gotten a few current emails and things and I think from what I remember of the original intent was we wouldn't cut. To bring up an eighth grader, that's what I remember the original intent of the rule being. Why didn't we make that intent? I think it was probably the board's kind of hoped that maybe administration had understood that. Because I even remember yourself asking the question of, so are we gonna cut people to bring people up? And it was kind of like, well, no, we wouldn't, but then I think the first season that had happened. So I think that's where we're looking at is, you know, I've had conversations with a few of the coaches and it's, yeah, if. Basketball requires, you know, if um, Tommy requires girls and it's outside of, but if, you know, he cut five girls. Why bring five girls up from eighth grade and pull from the middle school squad and hurt the middle school competition and level? You know, granted, those five girls may not have made the metrics or whatever, but you're giving them the opportunity to get better and. Improve to where maybe as a sophomore, they are better um, than as a freshman. You know, those are the opportunities we don't want to take from kids and dishearten them, I guess, in my opinion, it disheartened them from trying out. You know, um, I think I heard one of the stories was it was like a junior that was cut, had done everything and then got cut at their junior year. Um, but had been doing all the practices and everything and an eighth grader beat him out, which good on the eighth grader, nothing against the eighth grader, but that. Junior may have had that leap for all state to be a senior, you know, it might have been that year that they figured it out, it's tough to say. Um, it all depends on, you know, that person, that attitude, there's a lot to it. Um, that was kind of my original intent is that we wouldn't, you know, I understand the the need to bring them up to be competitive to get there. But also, you know, do you hinder a program by bringing someone up? Do you hinder someone's, you know, progression because you cut them? Thank you for that, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was cleared on the seat page. That's how I, yeah, that was how I remember it, I don't know if anyone else. I don't believe that's correct, it actually.
No.
I tried to make an emotion that said otherwise and that didn't happen, but anyways, that's besides the point, I don't need to get into that, sorry. Uh, so the question, my next question would be, my next question would be, um, do we know of any issues with individual sports? That that has been voiced, have we had any issues with any of the individual sports? The way, the way the current policy reads. It's all team sports.
I I think with the. I think this is the first year, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Irvin, you would be the one. Um, last year, we didn't have a high participation level of our eighth graders in the individual sports, but this year. We've seen a jump in that.
It grew a little bit as we've added new players.
Right.
Have we seen any issues or problems or any concerns from the community with having that participation?
Most of the ones that I'm aware of that are participating with the exception of wrestling, like, I don't know if you had an eighth grader last year or not. Did you have one last year, Bo? Um, most of them are pretty new this year to having a significant number in them as far as individual sports. Um, but that's, I haven't heard any. Um, I think one of the reasons that I asked to bring it forward was to see how well this fit our schools and our programs. Did it fit what we needed? Was it accomplishing everything or was this in a way hindering things? Um, one of the concerns I have is um, our high school budget is extremely tight and has been for the last decade. Um, are we bringing kids up and we're using our high school funds? And I realize M H S A has said that this is, this is fine, but our funds are separated K twelve and. Or K eight and nine twelve. If our funds are that tight at the high school, is that the best use of our funds at the high school level? That's a, just a question that I have.
Is there, I guess, what would the extra cost be?
Well, if you're bringing, if you're bringing extra kids, you're using funds to go to. Our, our, our travel, our travel is a significant amount.
Food? Lodging.
Food, lodging, yeah.
Do they, many teams stay overnight, I know football there's, or I mean basketball, they used to stay overnight all the time, I don't think they hardly did this year.
We're far away from everywhere, we stay overnight for a lot of our program.
Okay.
The numbers as far as participants about the same because we're low in numbers and.
Yeah.
If we keep a certain amount, let's say our roster is 26 kids, it's gonna be 26 into every field, but you know what I mean, so it.
And and so that was my, that was a question I had, Mark, is that having a negative impact on our high school budget? Um, whether that's.
Not here, but lots of other things. To be honest with the eyes, because the numbers are about the same, you know. If anything, they're a little lower than we've had in the past.
And sophomore junior gets to have five eighth grader, are we making it harder? Or media for sophomore, who we want? Not that long ago that there were two eighth grade teams, two seventh grade. Now we can't handle one, I mean, I mean, like, is it that I'm not good enough to go to the high schools? I don't know, it is a stigma, it, I would not want to be a kid.
Well, I don't think we're, I don't think we're gonna be able to answer that, and I don't think the coaches can answer that one. Even if, what what that, what that answer is um, for participation.
Yeah.
And I I want to clarify that, so the recommendation as I read it and correct me if I'm wrong, but. That the recommendation is we would still allow eighth graders to participate in high school sports. Under the condition that there's a lack of participation numbers, so like Bo. I know one of your concerns in the past has been, you know, you had weight classes where you didn't have anybody at the high school grades that could fill those weight classes. So the way I read this is that you would say, I have a lack of participation in these lower weight classes so that you could still bring up. Eighth graders that were strong enough. eighth graders that were strong enough and competitive enough to compete at those weight classes. And, and correct me if I'm wrong in understanding that as the recommendation, but it look, to me, I read it as they would still be eligible to play, but we would not be cutting high school students to take an eighth grader over a high school athlete. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, if the numbers dictate.
So, so that's the way I read, I remember this specifically because that's exactly how I read it the first time that we went through it. And then when I brought that up, you, you basically had said, if there's not room for them on the varsity level, they can't come up, up at all. So we're not talking about JV level or, or C squad.
That is, that's a proposal in front of you right now. Yeah.
And that's what I thought too, because I, I read it the way you did last time, Kristen, which was exactly, basically you can bring them up for lack of participation, but essentially I believe that the recommendation reads like, we're only worried about at the varsity level. So if they can't field a C squad, it doesn't matter as long as they can feel a varsity squad. We still can't bring people up. That's the recommendation.
That's the initial one. Correct.
Is that the way you understood it, Kristen, or?
I guess, no, I guess I was understanding it. If I'm short on the C squad, if I'm not cutting a ninth or 10th grader and I only have, you know, six kids on my basketball team on the C squad, then maybe I could look at an eighth grader if I'm not cannibalizing the middle school program.
Now, now again though, Jake, with this, right, like
Yep, for sure.
Because of the dynamic with this being asked to be put on here, right? So I put that initial one on there.
Yep.
And that's why I had Mark and Heather also speak to this. We can adjust that to be specifically for high school and leave it without the varsity piece, right? You have all those opportunities. That was just the initial one, right? As my team and I were looking at, well, how would we want to start this into the system, right? Cause anytime you start something to a couple of years in now, you have a, a different knowledge grab in terms of what's working, maybe what doesn't work. So that was a way for us just to kind of step into this and say, is this the best approach in kind of looking at all of your different points, right? Cause it makes sense. Is this fair to our high school kids competing? And also like for Garrett and Tyler to yours too, a way to try to break it down and specify it. So there isn't any kind of gray area, you know, cause we understand how those happen and we were trying to make it real specific so that it wouldn't have some of those, well, like the intent was this, but maybe that's not what happened. So um, you all do have the ability to, like I said, table it and kind of wait for some more information or move forward with one that you all feel is the best fit for Haver Public Schools moving forward.
Are there any, are there any coaches that would like to share or have any comments or, or anything like that? Um, we'll just start with Bo and then if any other coaches want to come down after him, come down and uh, feel free to give us your thoughts.
Yeah, uh, thanks guys for the time. Um, just to speak to the eighth grade participation in general, the varsity only doesn't fit for our sports. Doesn't fit for individuals and I think I could probably speak for the team sports that not necessarily fit for them either. I'll let them speak to that. But you guys, we're obviously revisiting this because you've heard negatives. What's wrong with eighth grade? Why? You've heard from parents, why it's, why it's a negative? But on the positive end of it, this year we had six eighth graders come up. We qualified five of those sixth grade, or five of those eighth graders for the state tournament. We had two girls, four boys qualify for the state tournament. One kid was one match away from placing as an eighth grader. Um, at the beginning of the year, our eighth graders were six for six on the ineligible list. And through participation in high school sports at the end of the year, not one of those kids was on the ineligible list at the end of the year. Um, it gives us an opportunity to build our programs. We, I keep hearing, what about our eighth grade? Well, your eighth grade program and your high school program are all one program. The wrestling program is the wrestling program from little kid all the way to high school. And same with your basketball programs, your volleyball programs, they're one program, eighth grade, seventh grade, it doesn't matter. So if you're bringing up an eighth grader, you're not, you're not deteriorating your program, you're building your program. Um, now that we've had this for two years and it's been opened up, um, from my end, we've seen a lot of positives. I can now go to a little kid tournament and listen to little kids talk about wanting to be a five time state champ, a five time placer, a five time state qualifier. And this year we have the opportunity for five of those students or six, five of the six of the students that came up have that opportunity to be five time qualifiers. That's building our program. Without those eighth graders this year, our numbers were down. They helped us to a top five finish. Um, and as far as varsity only, wrestling, things changed throughout the year so much. Kids lose weight, gain weight, injuries. If we were to say varsity only, we couldn't field a team. We wouldn't be a top five team year in and year out without that. Um, numbers are dwindling in all sports. We all see it. But I think we're kind of stuck on this age thing and not looking at this as a whole. Our programs are a whole program. We're Haver from top to bottom. So I think you need to take that into consideration when making your decision that we're not, we're not deteriorating our middle school program. We're building the whole goal for athletics is to be at the high school level. We, I tell my sons that are six and seven, nobody cares if you're a P U E state champ. You know, it's cool for the parents for a little while, but that's not what we're building for. We're building for high school state champs. We're building to have team championships around here. And that's, it's all one program. It's not age specific. And I think uh, that's something that we really need to consider. Also with wrestling, we, if you say varsity only, that also doesn't work for the fact that we have a wrestle off every week. That varsity spot can change week to week. We can have one kid wrestle up and beat somebody, they're the varsity person. There's no subjectivity of it. You know, there's, I'm not picking who's where. They, they want the spot, they get it. Um, as far as speaking to, I'm not going to speak to the team, team sports so they can, they can speak to that themselves. But as far as the way that I see it, as far as cutting a kid that's older for an eighth grader, you guys aren't taking into consideration all the work that that young kid has done to get themselves to that level. Just because somebody is older does not necessarily give them the right to have a spot. There's young kids that work their tails off to earn that. So I think we need to take that into consideration also when revisiting this eighth grade rule. Um, like I said, I've seen a lot of positive for it. Um, it's helped our program immensely. Like I said, we were, we were back in the top five this year. We've been out of the top five once in the last 20 years or maybe twice COVID year and and two years ago. So having those eighth graders, they're excited about it. There's more seventh graders that are excited about the opportunity to do it. So um, I think if we can come to a decision or you guys can come to a decision that would benefit everybody. Um, and think of it as a whole program and not just age specific. Thanks.
Thanks, Bo.
So uh, I'm actually the middle school basketball coach as well. And uh, I agree with Bo on his point that our basketball program is our basketball program. Um, I've certainly used our middle school program as a feeder program into our high school. And um, you know, seen a lot of success from that and um, it would be looking at our numbers these next few years, um, if we didn't have those eighth graders come up, I truly don't think there's a chance we're able to field uh, three teams. Um, a C squad, JV and varsity team. Um, without pulling them up, especially now that the middle school season will be same time as a, our high school season. So um, I, I have a lot of positives to say about, we had three um, play this year. I think the developmental difference between high school basketball and middle school basketball is just night and day. Um, as someone, you know, be, being a coach of both the middle school and the high school, I would advocate, it affects me both sides. I would advocate for those kids to play up. And Mark had mentioned and uh, Mrs. Haney had mentioned that uh, a lot of the teams we play in our middle school league, they're running the same thing. They're pulling all their eighth graders up. And the teams we play, you know, a lot of them only have one middle school team. And our seventh grade teams are playing mainly teams that are composed of fifth and sixth graders. So as I look at it as from a whole program standpoint, if we've got a few eighth graders that are competitive enough to move up, I would consider maybe combining, you know, maybe we have a seventh and eighth grade team, one middle school team. And those kids are getting, you know, those seventh graders are playing other eighth graders and whatnot. It, that's good for their development, better for their development than playing a bunch of fifth and sixth graders. Right? Or maybe there, a thought could be opening up sixth grade basketball that we haven't done before. If I, I don't think we have, Heather, have we? No. So I just, I would, I would um, I just think the next few years, what's best for, you know, girls' basketball is we allow these eighth graders continue to participate. And going along with the varsity only uh, rule, I, I really don't think that's gonna work out very well. I think, I see some challenges with that as well. Um, we go into tryouts, we're low on numbers. Okay, we pulled an eighth grader up. That eighth grader is clear cut better than a sophomore or a junior. But just because they're in the eighth grade, we have to stick them to sub varsity. Or because they are better, do we give them that chance to play up? I see that as kind of a, a challenge. Um, comparing it to academics, um, the philosophy of academics in our school, we have plenty of students um, that are qualified to take high school level courses as eighth graders that are allowed to do that, such as algebra and whatnot. We have upperclassmen, high school kids that take uh, dual credit college classes. And I think our athletics philosophy could reflect our academic philosophy as well. And that if there are certain kids that Bo pointed out that have put in the time and effort to reach that level, that they should benefit from that. And uh, I don't think, I don't know. I think that those opportunities, just from what I've seen this past year were so positive um, for those eighth graders that I had. Uh, one of them was uh, fortunate enough, she earned an opportunity to be on our uh, varsity bench. And she played on our JV team, led our JV team in, in scoring, and she got the opportunity to see what it was like to be at the state tournament and be a part of that. And you know, she has aspirations to be a high level basketball player. And I was really glad to see her rewarded for that. And it would just uh, I think more kids should get that opportunity. So thank you. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
I just viewed enrollment, so twenty one, twenty two. Our enrollment has went up from four hundred and eighty one high school students, four hundred and thirteen middle school students to five hundred and twenty one high school students, three hundred and eighty middle school. So middle school did decline, but high school, our kids, there's so many more. I, I think we need to motivate, how do we get kids to want to participate?
Good question. If anyone has the answer.
That one. Mr. Burgess? Yep.
So I hate mics. I really get really nervous around them. Um, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back both these guys up that came up and talk. They uh, bring those eighth graders up. It's been a huge deal for us. And I understand you guys are up here saying that we have the numbers. Um, I had thirty five kids try out at five forty five on the twenty first of November. On the twenty second of November, the second day we came out, I was down to twenty eight kids. And we ended up finishing with twenty four kids left on the team with the three eighth graders that we kept. Um, in two years, we, we brought up seven total eighth graders. Um, the four that came up the very first year, um, two of them were dressing out for varsity this year. Dressing, didn't get to play. They got a lot of JV time, but big time development. Um, like Coach Brown was saying, the development for those kids to earn that opportunity was huge. I mean, for us, they, they stay at our C squad. We practice every single morning at five forty five in the morning just to make gym space work. These kids are showing up at five forty five, going to practice until seven forty five, hopping or seven thirty and hopping back up here and getting to school and, and earning an opportunity to, to compete at a higher level. Uh, for me, the bigger, faster, stronger type of thing for eighth graders, you know, you're going up against freshmen, sophomores, they're going to help their development. Um, speaking competitively wise, I mean, we're playing against a team in Glendale that started an eighth grader on, on a team that went to the state tournament that this year he was fourth in the state in scoring as a freshman. I mean, we're, we're, we're not the only ones that are trying to get eighth graders up, but if they're good enough to be up there, I, I strongly believe they should be up there if they earn that right to be up there. Cause they're, they're in our tryouts with our older kids and, and I can tell you there, there's a big time difference in the ones that got cut and the eighth graders that stayed. It's not just because they're in eighth grade. I'm talking your classroom wise, um, you're looking at kids out of those thirty three, thirty four, you're looking at kids that have a hard time in the classroom and, and a consistent basis. Um, to take away a spot from an eighth grader that has earned it, that's putting in the time for a kid that's he's going to struggle to even get there. I mean, it's hard. And even this year, we looked at our C squad. I um, kept a kid who'd never played on an organized team before, ended up staying on our team, loved it, got a little better from it, had another kid who had a couple of F's. He'd promised that he was going to get him up and sure, he, he absolutely did that. He held his end of the bargain of it. Um, it's just one of those things for those eighth graders that the opportunity for them to get up and compete is, is where I'm at with it more than anything. It's just going to help us compete. Right now I'm sitting at five total sophomores left in the program total. And that's, that's sophomores that have C squad options moving forward. They're, I don't know where they're going to be at, but just having that opportunity to bring those eighth graders up to help, help us field a competitive team moving forward is something that I would highly suggest as far as coming in, but that's just kind of where I'm kind of at with that. I just want to come and say my two cents and definitely highly back these guys for sure. So thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Do you have any other coaches or parents or?
Hi, I'm Michelle Keller. Um, I am a parent of a seventh grader right now, who is actually going to be an eighth grader next year. And I fully support these coaches and everything that they said in building their programs. On, aside from the parent perspective, I think it's important. I'm a teacher as well. And I see the benefit of developing good programs and what it does for our students. I also listened to Tommy and Wayo about how letting those eighth graders play up helped in their developmental skills. There, that last year and this year and and how those eighth graders have worked very hard to put themselves in the position that they're at. And I, I'm going to be very blunt. Uh, my son works very, very hard. And he is, he's a decent basketball player. And I don't know that I, I love the, that M H S A passed the eighth grade rule, but the reality is that they did. And schools across the state are allowing their eighth graders to play. And so if we don't allow our eighth graders to play, we are not evening the playing field for our eighth graders. Those eighth graders across, across the state are getting five years experience. They're getting an extra year of development that both of our coaches, three of our coaches have indicated has been very important in their success. And I don't, you know, you talk about how it's unfair to some of the other students by being cut, but nobody's mentioned the fairness to the eighth graders. So my son has, has aspirations to be, to play at, at the college level. And I think that he should be given an even playing field and uh not be put at a disadvantage by not allowing them to play. So, I guess. And also, I, I wanna reiterate what they've said. Um, I've witnessed our middle school competition with my daughter, who's now a freshman, and my son, like I said, is a seventh grader. And it's, there is no competition. So we are also, our seventh and eighth graders currently, well, not necessarily the eighth graders, because they've been, they've been allowed to move up the last couple of years. But prior to that, they've had no competition and they've, they've, their amount of development has been limited because of our lack of competition at the middle school level. So it's kind of two, twofold, like, we're not giving them any competition at the middle school level, and then we're not allowing them to get the competition that they deserve at the high school level, and we are putting them at a serious disadvantage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keller.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Whitmer, and I'm in support of what the coaches are in the, um, when I heard this proposal or whatever, I thought that I didn't have an opinion either way. But the more that I thought about it, I do have an opinion, and it's for our kids to have the best competition, because that's what our kids are there for, to do sports, is to compete, get better, and to learn that sport. My child started travel sports probably when he was in fourth grade. He had two left thumbs, two left feet. He was not very good. Um, was able to get him on a travel team. He worked his butt off. He um started, he wanted to get better at basketball. So he started playing basketball all the time because he wanted to get better at the sport, to play with his friends. He's a seventh grader now. He's gonna move up to eight. And he, this year, he turned, turned a uh, turned the corner. He's playing really, really well. And when he found out that he had an opportunity to play possibly high school sports next year for basketball, it just motivated him more to um work harder so he could play potentially with his friends, so he could gain, you know, more competitive advantage. Uh, he played junior high basketball this year and he did not have as much fun as his travel season. And every game that they played, I think the, they probably won by twenty-five points or more. The competition that they played was not there. It's not fun to the other teams that they get beat by thirty, forty, sometimes fifty points. You know, and it gives these kids an opportunity to move up to maybe, you know, give some kids underneath them the chance to compete. You know, and also, I also coach sports for Havre Public Schools. I, I coach football. And our competition for football, uh, we play class B schools. And the schools that we play do not give the seventh grades a competition besides Glasgow. But Glasgow moved up or moved down a bunch of eighth grade kids, so they were able to compete with our seventh graders. The only team that we're able to compete with was Lewis Town. And um, that was our closest game, but most of our games were forty, fifty, sixty point wins. And if it's about giving our kids the best advantage to get more competition, it's so they can move up and play. It's, it's imperative that you have these kids have success and they continue to move up. And the Lewis Towns, like their basketball team, we play them. We're ahead of them right now in our travel, in, as far as our travel team, because we've been playing them. But slowly, they're getting better because their junior high competition, they play Billings, Central, Laurel, Lockwood, Mile City, Harden, they're getting better. And we're playing class B schools, class C schools, and we're beating them by fifty, sixty points. We're not learning as much at that point. So I hope that you guys consider that, you know, we can continue to have uh, eighth graders move up to have that better competition, to make them better athletes. Thanks.
I'm gonna come out this uh Mike Kellum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Uh, I'm gonna come out this at a little different perspective. My, I have two daughters. Um, they both go to St. Jude's. And uh, uh, my thirteen-year-old, I think when she was fourth or fifth grade, came home one day crying because Ms. Jarvis told her that she had to play sports. And uh, my wife and I both played just about every sport you could play in high school and, and uh, I wasn't a great athlete, but, but the rule kind of in our house is uh, if your team needs you, you need to try it out, because how do you know you don't like it? So I'm a big proponent of everybody should be able to play, right? Uh, I think once you get to the eighth grade high school level, that kind of leaves the door because you're separating yourselves from the kids that have put in the time and all the effort and all the hours to be able to go and do whatever they wanna do. And if that's, M H S A has come out with this eighth grade rule, then, then so be it. But back to my daughter, and I wanna address uh Kelly, your, your concerns on uh, on some of this stuff and, and how we motivate these kids. I think that starts at home with the parents, right? And, and maybe not always, but uh, uh, we told Kara, well, you ha- you have to try it. Uh, so she, she did, and, and day two, fell in love with it. And at that time, St. Jude's was really low on numbers. They have a, a seventh and eighth grade team, and here Kara is needing to play because she's a fifth grader. And uh, they got their butts kicked every game. And every game they got their butts kicked, Kara came home, matter and matter, and, and how do I get better, dad? Or mom? And we said, well, you gotta work harder. And so she did. And she's now a thirteen-year-old seventh grader. Coach Tommy and, and Jared and, and Coach Wade invited her to come to some of the open gyms. I think there was one or two times she was the only kid at the open gym throughout the whole high school. And so when we heard about this, we didn't hear it but, from anybody but my seventh grader that has aspirations of playing high school or trying out for uh, high school next year as eighth grade, she came home and said, gosh, dad, uh, it wasn't quite like that. She was about in tears. I don't think I'm gonna get the opportunity possibly to go play high school. And I said, well, we'll deal that, deal with that when it comes. Um, and I think like these guys said, you guys, you guys look at the negative too often. If there were some kids that were cut, that's the ultimate motivator. If you wanna get better, talk to the coaches and find out what you need to do to get better. So we, we had a conversation with Kara. Well, here's the deal, you might not get to play uh, high school as an eighth grader. And guess what? Even if they do pass it and you get to, you might not make the team. So you have that same disappointment in a girl that possibly, somebody that gets cut, right? What a great parenting moment. What a great parenting moment when the kids get cut. It's, it's, it's all about learning what we need to do. I'm speaking from somebody twenty-seven years ago that wasn't a very good athlete. Uh, sophomore year in, in Chinook High School, I went out for basketball, played seventh, eighth freshman year. I got cut. I didn't go to the coaches. I didn't go to the school board. My parents didn't go to the school board. They didn't email the school board and asked to change the rule so that I could play. I either went and worked harder or didn't play. As it was, I had to go wrestle, which wasn't my dream sport, but uh, I think that there, there's another part of this too, with these guys trying to build a program. You guys hire these guys, don't you? And you put your trust in them. We need to trust them to make the right decisions in whether cutting kids or bringing kids up, because they are trying to build a program. And they want their jobs and they wanna keep their jobs. And, and to keep them jobs, they kinda need to put people in the seats and, and build these programs. So we need to give them every tool they have. Uh, I was reading in the paper the other day, or, or throughout, throughout the last few seasons, and I, one of them that sticks out is uh, uh, Montana Tech's coach that was at uh, at Belt. His daughter led their, I believe she led their scoring in Butte, Butte High as an eighth grader, and has, has gone on to do that. So we want potentially to take away eighth graders playing, and then as Michelle was saying, we go play somebody like Butte, who is allowing their eighth graders to play, that has an eighth grader leading their team, puts us at a huge disadvantage. So I think we need to look at it as, it's a bummer to get cut. But there's a lot of kids working hard every day from fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade to get better. Somebody that just goes out eighth, ninth, tenth grade and just wants to play because they're maybe curious about it. If they're good enough, fine. If they're not, go work harder. But this isn't participation in high school and, and seventh and eighth grade anymore. So, um, I was, I was gonna address you, Kevin, too. Um, we've talked about it. My daughter has been playing on some travel teams with girls a lot older than her. And uh, being around them, I wasn't, I wasn't really for that either. You know, a thirteen-year-old playing with some sixteen-year-olds, it's been the best thing ever for her. Those sixteen-year-old girls, and girls can be mean, and there are some times. But we've watched her flourish just with her confidence and everything else, being around those girls, because most of the time they're pretty supportive. So, uh, I would really, if you get the chance, talk to some of the coaches, call them. I, I was hoping you guys had already done that. If this, if this was important enough to put on the agenda, I figured you guys had all talked to some coaches at least to see the positive, because you guys came out with all the negatives. So I would think long and hard about this. Uh, especially the disadvantage of, of what you're doing to the coaches in the room and whatnot. So, thank you for your time.
Do you have any other comments?
Okay, any board members? Have any other thoughts, or do we wanna wait till we can make a decision tonight? We can wait till they have their schedule, what that actually means, which is what our A Ds have asked us to do.
I would have questions to ask, like how do we get better competition for middle schoolers outside of moving them up? That would be a question that I'd wanna ask, and I don't know if anybody has an answer for that, anything along those lines. There are other ways. It sounds like there's travel sports going on. It sounds like there is opportunities. Another question I would have is what percentage of the high school kids that do, or the eighth graders that do move up to high school, how many of those are playing travel sports already? What, what's that percentage? And what kind of opportunities are there for those travel sports? You know, one of my problems with some of the team sports is uh, subjective versus objective on, on some of that, versus the individual sports being very objective. You put two kids against each other, the top kid wins the sport, or wins, wins a seat on the varsity. Um, we can't deny that, that in some places, I'm not saying that it happens here, but definitely last names matter. I'm not saying that's happening here. I'm not throwing anybody, anything out like that, but it definitely does happen. I've watched a lot of small towns where that happens. Um, there's just, there's a lot of different concerns here, and I don't know how we get some of these questions answered, and I don't know how the conversation happens. But uh, those would just be s- some of the things that I guess I would like to get some clarification on, but I don't know how.
Well, as far as, I, I mean, as far as the travel teams, that's outside, that's outside of our realm.
Hundred percent.
Um, that's a, usually mom and dad driving kids and
Hunter, absolutely agree.
Um, so that piece of it is really outside of really what we
I agree with that. But I still would be curious is what, what percentage of kids that got moved up did play travel sports? Just like that piece of information.
I would venture to say it's almost all. Without, without knowing every single kid personally, but I would venture to say that that's interesting, whether it's wrestling, maybe the exception of track and field. I don't know if we have a travel, track and field program.
And how do we get better competition from middle schoolers outside of moving them up? Is there, is there a possibility of having eighth grade teams come down to play, seven, our seventh grade teams? Or a possibility of having freshman teams from other schools come down to play our eighth grade teams? Are those possibilities? Can we do that if the seasons start to overlap with, with girls basketball?
I think Mark, Mark and Heather kinda talked a little bit about then potentially with the seasons adjusting. And if there is some flexibility maybe to adjust the conference on who we play. So Mark kinda talked a little bit about previously who Havre was playing. And then as seasons have changed or leagues have changed, then we've played different competitions. So I think if sports are going to be realigning to some different seasons, there could be an opportunity for that, right? And I know with the different meets we have, certainly at the high school level too, we've tried to really expand from like, speaking from like a, a track perspective, we've been trying to make sure that our kids get down to higher level meets for competition, right? So they're going more to some west side competition like Frenchtown, Poulsen this week. They go down to Billings, right? So I think that is taking place, that there's efforts being made to ha- put our kids in those positions to have a little bit higher level competition.
I guess one thing that I've noticed over the years is class C schools are getting smaller, class B schools are getting smaller. And there's always an exception of one moving up or down, but Havre High took a big jump at the high school. But I believe that was because of the Hutterite colonies that were taken over. Is that true or false?
No, not, not, not at this point, Kevin. Like, that could be something in the future, not impacting the high school, but um, adding two total numbers in the district. So because the Hutterite colonies are K-eight, it wouldn't necessarily have any impact with the high school.
What about the number of people transferring in from other schools?
Now, that does, that does definitely affect the high school, correct. Yep.
There's been, how many would you guess off the top of your head?
You know, I'd probably divert to Coach Krasinski for that one.
Yeah, the number of kids that transferred in from other class C schools around us or schools around us to come to Havre. Ballpark. Okay.
And that, and yeah, and that what I would say across the board to Kevin, isn't necessarily just high school, but kind of across the district. Yep.
I, you know, everyone in here, if you say, do we want everyone to excel in math? Absolutely. You want them to excel in any of the academic studies, the answer's gonna be absolutely. There is a commitment to these travel teams that it takes a lot of time. All in the kids around for whatever sport they're involved in. I think uh, Waylon had said that he started out with thirty-five and ended up with twenty-two or twenty-four. You know, from the beginning to the end of the year, competition's always good for everyone, especially if it's better. So I would hate to limit the students. I know we have good coaches here. Um, that's my feeling, and, and I don't see, if you look at middle school and I think we play some class C schools and the, with the middle school teams. And a lot of their kids are already playing on varsity at the high school. I don't know if they bring up any seventh graders, but they bring up the eighth graders. You look at our eighth graders in, if they do go up and they're still a team by the sounds of it right now, and you have seven in middle school, that doesn't mean they're all gonna go out for basketball when they're in high school. I think there's usually a drop off. I guess, challenge them, work around it. My personal opinion.
The problem is, is when you compare this to academics, it's not, you're not comparing apples to apples. You're not, you're not kicking somebody out of a math class to bring somebody up to accelerate in another math class. That's just the facts. So we can't, we can't say that it exactly correlates perfectly.
Well, I, I didn't mean it to correlate perfectly. I'm just saying Well, I, I didn't mean it to correlate perfectly. I'm just saying we want people to excel in all areas, no matter what.
We do, but we don't want to kick kids out of, out of things that they're not doing well at either if they still want to participate. Would you like to sit down and address the board?
I was, I was gonna say, if you want to come down to address and make a comment, you can do so, but just come down to the mic if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'm up there. Uh, I'm Jared Weigle. Uh, assistant coach, uh, and I also have a seventh grade daughter. Sports has been pretty much my whole life. I grew up here doing sports. Uh. As for like the names and you have questions about, you have certain names that get to participate and get a little fair treatment.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe that is, but that's life. And what is sports for our kids? It is to help them through their life, right? It is building them to be gr- great adults, great men, great women, everything like that. That is what our sports are for. So yeah, maybe that happens. Life is not fair. Doesn't matter how old you are, the older you get, the more unfair. So. You have those obstacles, you teach your kids to fight through them. They want it bad enough. They will go to achieve that. And that's what sports is. Yeah, some kids might get cut as a sophomore, as a junior. But. How bad do they want it? How bad are they get, how much time are they going to put in to achieve what they want? We all have goals. We set those goals. And. What I've been told is you probably learn more through failure and how you act after you fail. What are you going to do to achieve those? Are you just going to sit and quit or are you going to keep going? So this is what we're trying to teach these kids. To become better adults and prepare them for life. And that's what sports does. It's a huge, huge contributor to what. You do later on in life. You do it in your jobs. Some jobs are individual, some you work as a group, as a team and all that stuff. You're going to put the best people in the best, best positions, especially in your jobs, right? You're not doing your job well, they'll find somebody else. It's just life. And I think you guys need to take that into consideration when you're uh, when you're approaching sports. Doesn't matter how old they are, eighth. Through twelfth grade. So, thank you.
Yes, a couple of thoughts I have. Um, I just want to thank you, all the parents that came tonight to advocate for your kids. Um, I know several of them personally and they're great kids. And um, I love that you guys are advocating for the eighth graders. And kind of where I sit on this board is that, you know. When I was seated on this board, I took an oath to advocate for all the kids in the district. And so I struggle because I recognize, you know, where you are coming from coaches and I know that we have great coaches on our staff. And I appreciate everything you do. And I look at and I agree with what you said, Coach Weigle, that. I believe sports teaches so many other things and so many other lessons than just winning. I think it teaches teamwork and how to get along and how to work hard and how to pull yourself up when you are really low. And it teaches you a lot of life lessons. So when I take a step back, I look at our district and I always say, I would love. Our kids to all have the chance to learn those lessons from great coaches like you. And when I look at our resources and like. Tim said, we have certain dollars that are intended for high school students and we have certain dollars that are intended for middle school students. While I recognize that some of our middle school students are more skilled in athletics than others. I also look at how do we create as much equity utilizing those resources as possible? And so if we can give a chance to an eighth grader to participate in sports and. A ninth grader to participate in sports at the same time. I want to do that. And so that's what I struggle with in making this decision and I want you guys to kind of all understand where I'm coming from in terms of the thoughts of. How do we best utilize those resources to give the most kids the opportunity to learn all the lessons that you're talking about?
My name is Lindsay Kellum and I'm married to Mike, so my girls go to St. Jude. So it's very awkward to be here, but. Um. I just, I think you guys are sitting on a really awesome opportunity coming from a school who. Um, struggles to find kids all the time. Um, St. Jude currently polls from fifth grade to field a junior high team, so a seventh and eighth grade team, and that's not standard across all the teams that we play. Um. So now with them realigning the seasons. You may find yourself in that boat. So you're struggling in high school to field three teams and you have the opportunity to field those three teams. And that might hurt your junior high program. But. As a parent of two kids now who have been able to start sports in fourth grade. Um, even when they were getting their butts kicked every single game because they were playing eighth graders as little tiny fifth graders. It has motive, we have the biggest um, number of kids out for sports now than we've had in years. Um, we have a fourth, fifth grade team that. It was a fifth, sixth grade team that is fourth, fifth and sixth graders and we have thirteen girls out. That we have never had that. And that is because we're starting them early. We're giving, we're, we're giving them a chance to start earlier. So I think with this realigning of the junior high. You are sitting on an opportunity to let those eighth graders excel. If they're good enough to be able to play at that level. But you have an opportunity to start in sixth grade now. So you can pull your sixth graders up and you can. Field a bigger junior high team and it's just going to make the program more competitive and it's going to motivate those kids to want to go out. Because now they can play in sixth grade or now they can play in fifth grade. And they're being led by, they're seeing the success of, oh, you know, those kids got to play high school sports when they were in eighth grade and I want to do that. I cannot tell you the motivation that it, I mean, so yes, our daughter Kara is a seventh grader. She played with those eighth grade girls that made the team this year. Her goal from the minute she found out that this is an opportunity was I want to get there. So. She's continued to go out, even when you get beat every time, even when life sucks, you. She is motivated by seeing those older kids do that. And so I understand where you're coming from, Kristen. Truly, I do that. Like, we should be able to give opportunities, but we're like. Kids are not going out and they're getting frustrated, but I think the way that we build that and we fix that is by starting them earlier and giving them something to look forward to. And we have seen it in our programs with record number of kids starting to go out now. Because they're getting to start earlier and they're getting motivated by older kids. So that's just a perspect, just a different perspective to think about, I guess, with what's happening here. And the possibility that. You have in front of you, you're probably not going to see it in your juniors now, your seniors now, but I think you're going to start to see it. As you go on, but you can't, I don't think it's fair to limit them like. The farther they can go, the more they can compete, just builds the motivation for them to keep going.
Okay, I'm Kyle Lees and I'm going to, I'm going to throw out a possible solution for you. As a board, why not pass this and do what the coaches and the activities directors are asking you to do in the recommendation is to allow all eighth graders regardless of what level C squad JV varsity play. But then go back and direct Mr. Irvin. To ask to put it on the next administrator's meeting at the Montana High School Association to readdress the eighth grade issue. Because what we're hearing a lot from the coaches is it's inequitable at the class A level with how schools are applying the eighth grade rule. So why not go back to the group that passed this and allowed this? And have them go back and set the guardrails up and say, okay. Here's the circumstances in which you can utilize eighth graders. And they do have policies which Mr. Gum and Mr. Urban can tell you in the books that differ for each class. So if they have to do it for double A, one sets differ for double A, class A. Class B, class C, but if you do it at class A, then all the class A schools in the state are playing with the same rules. And then if, then if your policy allows, then everybody's playing the same rules and then you don't have the inequity and you're not dealing with this every year because. Then, okay, this is what's happening. So that's what I would suggest is pass it. And allow it to happen and then direct Mr. Urban to go to the M H S A and say, let's address it at the state level.
Here's about a lot to chew on tonight. And since we're heading to the midnight hour, I'm going to be brief. Uh, one, I'm not going to go and because I'll lose one hundred and eighty-two to one for everybody else that's in favor of it. And that's why the M H S A put it in districts' hands. They're not going to deal with it anymore. So nice thought, but won't happen. Just a couple of things to consider. Um. Yeah, I support our coaches because we hire them to put the best team on a floor, on a field, on a court, whatever. And sometimes now we're in just a different era where that happens. But the other thing I'd just like you to consider. When, when we have moved kids, a part of it is also. To field teams at the lower level so that those kids. We would have. This year, we would have had girls. Not be able to play. They would have sat on a JV bench and not gotten to play at all. Without kids that came up and helped them have a C squad team. And those kids got to play a lot this year. So there is that side of it that can happen as well. Just to think about that. It did allow some of our girls. In the high school level that wanted to be a part of it, be able to have that chance to play. So that was a part of it. Just, you know, I, I think that needs to be considered. The other thing is. I have several homeschool kids who now go out and compete against our Haver High kids and I feel like our Haver High kids. Should get the benefit of the doubt over them as well, but I'm going to say this, if I have an eighth grade Haver student. I feel like they deserve a better chance than someone who's not enrolled in Haver Public Schools, but there's another thing that has changed. We now have homeschool kids. And some of them, and we have a co-op in swimming. Another school and some of those kids were very instrumental in some of our success in certain things. So. The plane, it's just changed and and I get these are just new things that didn't exist a few years ago. But another thing to consider, we have homeschool kids that come in and they're high school age, but they come and impact potentially spots. You know, in different competitive areas for our Haver High kids as well, but. That has changed. You can now. Play in your district that you live in, even if you're a whole two kids. So that's changed. Well. And again, sometimes those numbers do help us field other. Sub varsity teams that our kids maybe wouldn't get a chance to play if we didn't have those. There are a few benefits as well, but I also, you know, just to support our coaches, yeah, they're going to try to put the best team out there. It's been different for them as well. They're trying to navigate the eighth grade thing as well. This is new for us. Um. But I would say this, the one thing I would tell you. I feel like they try to do it with a lot of integrity. And I say that because I work with them every day with these things and I've done it for a couple of years with them and it is amazing. It's like, it's not easy putting this on you guys. I understand that. But I do know that they approach this. And they love the kids they work with. And it's hard to cut a kid and they love those kids too, but they try to do everything that they're going to do. To put the best product out there to represent Haver High but to do with integrity. So I truly believe that one, they're good people that way. So just a couple of final. Thank you.
Okay. My one. Area that I have trouble with this rule on. Is um. The point of academics. We have an academic school. Right? That's the point of Haver Public Schools is to put out. Um, it does, our mission statement doesn't say anything about athletics, talks about academics. Now, athletics are there to help. Motivate our kids to stay. Into their academics and that's a piece of it. We've heard from coaches for a number of years that. They may come in ineligible. But during the season, they stay eligible. That also holds true for our high school kids. Um, that's a motivator for them to stay in our schools. Um, there are certain kids that only come to our schools and they only stay here because we have athletics that they can participate in. I'm not saying that's. That they should have. Um. Being more right over anybody else, but that's another thing to consider as we look at this. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions or concerns?
I have a question on this uh. Proposed policy. If it's voted down, do we just stay with the existing one or does that mean they're all voted down or what?
We would stay with the existing.
Hmm, okay. Yeah. And like I said, um, I just placed the original recommendation just based on. The fact that this was asked to come back in front of the board. So you do have flexibility, like, like we said, you could table it. You could then vote it down. You could decide to make a different modification to the policy, right? So you have a lot of flexibility in how you want to, how you want to do that. You could also. Kevin, put a proposal forward just to stay with the existing policy if you'd like. So you have a kind of a wide array. Um, I think it was good that, you know, after a couple of years, probably to reexamine it. You've heard from coaches, you've heard from our activities directors. So really you have a lot, a lot of flexibility on what you want to do.
Okay, with that being said, we can either table it or we can make a motion to. This Jake.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. That's okay.
Yep.
Okay, it's going to kind of be a two-part motion. So I'm going to make a motion and then I'm going to make an amendment to the motion. Does that sound okay? Uh, uh, amendment meaning adding to, so it's basically going to require two. Is that okay, Tim? Stay with me, buddy.
Can we just do one moment?
We, we, we can. It's kind of two separate. Aspects though. Just stick with them, all right?
All right.
So I, I'm first going to tell you what my intent is and then you, you can help me frame it however you want to, but. So I would like to make a motion that eighth grade participation rule be in effect for all individual sports, just to keep it how it is for individual sports. I think individual sports are very different than team sports. So, so that would be, that would be one aspect of the motion I would like to vote on. The other aspect is, is a bit longer. And I would like to say that the eighth grade participation rule be applicable. For all team sports. Only when the team can't be filled entirely by high school students. There's a bit more. Let me know when you're ready.
Do we need to um, specify? Exclude football or do we need to say that?
Well, that's part of the M H S A rule, so that.
Football, yeah, football can't be considered.
Okay, just wanted to know.
All right, Jake.
Eighth graders will not be allowed to play if any high school student is cut from the team.
So how about allowed to play in place of a high school student?
Okay. And the eighth grade student being allowed to play a team sport due to low participation numbers must play on the lowest level team available. You can simplify it by all means.
So to sum up your motion. Eighth grade participation stays in effect. For individual team sports.
No, individual sports.
They're individual sports.
Yes.
And eighth graders only. Participate when a team can't be filled by high school students. And the eighth graders will. Play. Eighth graders will not be allowed to play in place of a high school s- student. I. I think that would be filled with previous.
Okay. That sound good and my.
And then play in the lowest team available.
Yeah, my only tendency is if there's only a JV team, obviously they can play JV. If there's a freshman team, they can only play on the freshman. And I think that addresses as many of the issues as we can. That's my take. And that's why I wanted to make that a two-part motion. So that we can vote on the, on the individual sports aspect alone. And then the team sports aspect. Does that make sense? Is it, is it a decent way to do that?
Just combine it into one.
Combine it into one, okay. And the only thing is to, because there might be some people that don't like the aspect of the team sport. But want to keep the individual sport there. Like it's, it's essentially two different, two different issues, the way I've addressed it. But if we want to keep it as one, that's fine.
It's, it's up to you. You can vote on it individually if that's what you'd like.
I prefer to vote on it individually.
Okay. Is there a second for the individual team sport motion that Jake?
I think it needs to be one motion.
Okay. Is there a second for the motion as a whole?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Jake and seconded by Tyler that eighth grade participation in individual sports stay in effect. Eighth grade participation in team sports on only be filled. Eighth grade participation only when team can't be filled by high school students and they play on the lowest team available. Okay. Right. Everybody. That's a summation of what we have here. Any member of the audience? Or the board wishes to speak to the motion? Oh, Mr. Kraski?
Hi. I want to make sure I understand. The first motion.
Oh, you may combine it into one motion.
We've combined it into one. So we're making a motion for individual sports kids to participate at the varsity level.
At any level.
At any level.
MHSA rule will be applicable.
Based on their age.
It's just the MHS, MHSA rule is applicable for all individual sport.
Eighth grade kids goes to an individual practice. I beat a high school kid. Nobody cares. I play on the varsity that weekend. Okay. If I'm a team sport kid, I can't play at the varsity level unless four kids try out for basketball.
That's correct.
I'm against that.
Thank you.
I have a question about Mrs. Haney mentioned that there were seven seventh graders, correct? Seven seventh graders that went out this year. What's that? Seven seventh graders and eight eighth graders? Okay. So there's no guarantee that we're going to get all those kids back next year. And so let's say at the high school level, we don't need any girls, but only four eighth graders go out. What are we going to do with those four eighth graders?
That's a very good question to answer.
Solid point.
I would think we treat all of them the same. You're going to do one as participation, do all of them as participation. If they're, if they are, if they're out and the need is there. Then they have the option to go as far as they can.
Hey, Tim, you should probably just go forward with the vote because you had a second.
Yep.
And then if it doesn't pass, then you can, another proposal can come forward. So.
Okay. All those in favor of passing this motion as it's configured?
Yes, Chris.
Repeat the motion.
Yep. High school participation stay in effect as, as it is for individual team sports. Eighth grade participation only when teams cannot be filled by high school students. And they have to play on the lowest team available. So if they go out for basketball, they can only play on the C squad level. If there's a C squad team, there's only a JV in varsity, they could only play on the JV. All those in favor of passing it as it stands? Raise your hand. All those opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
You can't. Nope. There's no abstain.
Okay.
Okay. So now we can either have another motion or we can table this until the next meeting and maybe a clarification from our A.D.s at the various levels.
I moved the table.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, it seems there is no second. We either make a motion or we can.
Mr. Chair, I move that we keep the rule as is. Second?
It's been moved by Garrett and seconded by Kevin that we keep the rule as is currently. Any member of the audience wish to speak to the motion? Any member of the board wish to speak to the motion?
When you say as is, we're talking about how it's been in the last two years.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion fails.
I think we need to, I think we need to. I think there needs to be more information. I, I I think we can make a, we can make a motion to table.
There a second?
All second.
It's been motioned by Tyler and seconded by Kevin that we table the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes seven to one. To table the agenda item D four. Till.
Would you like that on the May meeting, Mr. Chairman? Okay.
Yeah, I know. We're now at the public comment portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for any member of our audience to bring to the attention of the board questions or relevant comment concerning school district matters not on the agenda. Board may not take any action on matters brought to the attention of the board unless specific notice of that matter is included and a properly noticed agenda. Therefore, in the public comment portion of the meeting, the board will not discuss or take any action, but may refer a matter presented to a future agenda. If you have comments, please come to the microphone so the board can hear you. Please note that the board is bound by ethical practice, district policy, negotiated agreements, and Montana statute to protect the rights of its employees. Are there any persons wishing to comment at this time?
Yeah, I have concern. I would like to know how the team sport coaches at Haver High School can do a better job building up the trust of this body to support their decisions when they're selecting and playing kids on a team that doesn't involve two kids wrestle off, that doesn't involve two kids run quick as kid goes. I'd like to know what information you would like from our coaches so that they can get your trust to do what we're doing for kids.
Thank you, Mr. Kraski. Are there any other comments? Okay, it seems there is none. We will move on to E one, our enrollment report.
Okay. Uh, Haver Public Schools closed out the month of March with one thousand seven hundred and eighty students. Uh, this is up one student from a year ago at this time. So when we look at that five-year trend, um, the uniqueness of this time of year is that we're still seeing an increase, even though it's not a large increase, right? If you kind of examine this from the five-year basis, we had a uniqueness a year ago where you saw some enrollment kind of start to trend up. When typically the five-year trend shows it kind of cascading throughout the time. So, um, which brought it up to a plus one. Again, this time of year being still at a plus one, always positive. So that's kind of where the five-year is, is sitting at right now.
Thank you. Um, Little Pony Roundup update?
You bet. Um, so I was going to have Cheryl Russell, uh, just kind of debrief with everyone on her thoughts on how the Little Pony Roundup went. Um, it used to previously be called Child Find. We decided to rebrand it a little bit this year. And so Cheryl's done an excellent job working with Haley and um, Leslie Adams and just kind of putting this all together. So with that being said, Cheryl?
It has been a huge team event and a great community participation this year. The Little Pony Roundup this year, we had, um, on Tuesday, we had sixty-one, uh, little ponies, three to five-year-olds. And we had twenty-seven, um, from zero to two, eleven years old. For a total of eighty-eight families that came through on Tuesday. On Wednesday, we had fifty-four families come through, um, with our three to five-year-olds. So, uh, total for both days, we had a hundred and forty-two families. Little ones that we were able to provide those milestone screenings for. Also added this year, um, was the, um, early literacy. So, um, we had Lisa Passins and her, uh, reading interventionists come in and fifty-two little ponies, uh, were administered the early literacy screening. So out of those, um, families that were there, seventy-seven of those were eligible to register for kindergarten. Um, sixty-one of those families so far have turned in, um, the rest of the paperwork and more, I'm sure will, will trickle in. Uh, we had a huge, um, staff support, uh, from our, from our school, um, the special services related staff. We had staff from Highland Park. Haley come, um, comes over every year and helps with that to greet and meet those kindergarten families coming in. Um, we have the, uh, secretary Jamie coming over from, uh, Highland Park as well. And then also Katie, uh, Marzenko was there, uh, to, to meet families. So we had just a host of, um, staff that participated in that, uh, in that piece. And Lorraine, thank you for hanging out with me on, on Wednesday. We had a, it, it was just a wonderful time to meet with, uh, community and, uh, make connections with all of our families. Um, I really would like, uh, say publicly, thank, um, the Fifth Avenue Christian Church for allowing us to use their facility. It was just a beautiful facility and it, uh, we all fit. It was wonderful to have so many people inside in a place where we could all fit. Um, they were very gracious with us. Um, we had Haver High, high school students come over. And those kids worked all day long on both days. We had Hill County Health Department there. Um, they even offered, uh, free immunizations to families who wanted those. We had Montana State Northern Nursing Program with us. They sent over ten nurses to help with us. Which really helped out for all of our zero to two-year-olds. We had, uh, Dr. Wyatt Rasmussen, an audiologist, come up from Great Falls. Bullhook Dental Clinic came over, um, to check, um, out kids. And then we had the Lions Club. Uh, Loring's husband, the president there come, uh, and help, um, with, uh, the vision piece. And Dr. Farmer joined them from our community. Independence Bank called and they sent their employees every hour. We had, um, employees for them for both days to support us. And Domino's, um, gave us a sweet deal on people. So anyway, I just wanted, if you see any of these folks out in the community, just really, you know, thank them because they did a great job. They give up time with their clients. They give up paid time to come and serve our families. And, and everything that we do is free. So anyway, it was great. Uh, thank you.
Cheryl, is this, how, how does this, these numbers compare with last year?
We're actually pretty close to the same. Uh huh. Yeah, very close to the same overall numbers. So we're a little short on families. I think there was like fourteen that we know are still out there who, um, for kindergarten registration. So I think we will probably be closer to ninety once those come in.
Okay.
Yeah. And then it always grows a little bit. So.
I heard really good feedback in the community from parents that went. And they just said it was so organized. It was well-run. They said it just felt very calm and I heard really good things.
Oh, awesome. That's great news. Yeah. Yeah. And we knew, you know, it's, uh, a new place from last year, a new name. But I feel like Little Pony Roundup is much more fitting for our new ponies coming in, right? But, um, great team effort.
Okay. Any other questions for? Ms. Russell? Okay. Not, uh, E three?
Yes. Uh, so Haver Public Schools is in the process of purchasing. Well, when I typed this up, we were in the process, but we've already purchased the banners now for, um, attendance matters. And so Lisa, um, actually happens to be in the audience tonight. And so we were visiting with then our principals on our BIT team meeting. So like, or actually it was the DID team meeting, right? It was from the district level. We were kind of talking through how in our continuous school improvement plan, one of the goals is an attendance goal, which fit nicely with this. And so Lisa kind of coordinated the efforts with the building principals to say, hey, here's why attendance matters. It, it, it's important for us that you bring your students to school daily because here's the results, right? So she kind of put some stats in there. As you know, we kind of flagged it out on Pony Post. So we've been trying to have people also see a visual of why it's important to come to school daily. Right? Um, so I think it's a super positive for our district. Uh, like I said, since I put this out, the banners are actually hung outside. You can see it when you go by Robbins. You can see it when you go by the schools, as well as we have inside banners as well. Correct, Lisa? So, um, it's just a real positive. I wanted to bring to your attention and it ties into not only our school improvement plans, but our district strategic plan. So it's an important one. Yep, yep, I do too. Perfect.
I like it because I know you guys talk about attendance with your kids at school. But I like these because they're a reminder to the parents how important attendance is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gumm? On that one? Mrs. Bits, what do we have for openings?
All right. This is the season for changes in staffing to start occurring, whether through retirements or attrition or moving or exploring new opportunities. So currently we're looking, um, at trying to fill about seven to nine certified teachers for next year. Eight certified, which would be our paraprofessionals. And then an assortment of high school and middle school extracurricular positions. So our hope is as these come about that we are putting them out there right away and starting the process. So we don't get further behind. So we have a couple of interviews scheduled and we're checking every day and hoping to find some more and potentially going to some job fairs too that are coming up. The ones we have been to so far have not had any candidates who are not already under contract. So, um, we're looking at another opportunity next week.
Okay. And then at those job fairs, are you offering?
Our hope is to interview right on the spot while we're there and then check references and go through our normal screening process. You know, do fingerprinting and then, uh, bring that to the board for approval.
Okay. But I, I mean, you would interview right there pending, pending the background check.
Yep. Pending board approval and background check, then an offer would be formally made.
And Holly and I kind of visited a little bit today on that as we were kind of looking at Western and some different opportunities. Uh, which is great. As you know, when we've kind of thought through this process and on what does that look like for the marketing of Haver Public Schools and and the difference now just in the lack of educators in the state that we may have to just kind of expand our grasp to go get them, right? And so there's some areas that are particularly hot in terms of teachers coming out, right? Western, that's one of the major things that they do there. So that could be a potential site, Bozeman, Missoula. And so what we're after is certainly putting the best quality educator in front of our kids. And if we have to go a little further to obtain that, then that's probably a direction we're going to have to do.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Mr. Gumm?
Yep. And then the final thing I was going to talk tonight was about our ballots and levies. So the ballots will go out in the mail, um, on April sixteenth. So I had Moses provide a sample for you to see what the ballot's going to look like. um on April sixteenth, so I had Moses provide a sample for you to see what the ballot's gonna look like. And then, um, as you know, the election itself is May sixth in the banner room, so Moses, I know, has been meeting with election judges and just kind of getting the process all ready to go. I included a sample of what our flyer looks like for you as well, just so you can kind of have your eyes on it. I know currently I've been with Garrett and Kristen and Lorraine, we've already been out speaking kind of publicly at different events. Tomorrow, we're gonna have uh Tim and Lorraine are gonna join me at a Booster Club meeting. So those opportunities from that email, like I said, if you can make it, we certainly understand if you can't. But just going out, um, just to kind of remind you of the rules, so I present basically the information on the flyer. So I'm there to kind of cast the information, answer questions, and then you all as board members really are out there um advocating for the levy, and so you have a different lens and window you can work with, so. Um, just to kind of keep you up to speed on how this levy process is working, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Flyer's the same one that's posted on.
Correct, yep, yep.
And was the sample passed around? Did it get stopped somewhere?
Sorry. Yep, I didn't realize, apparently this was also did not realize, sorry.
I have a question. Kelly's on Booster Club. If she's there plus two trustees, doesn't that put us in a?
Good to know, Kelly, yes.
If she's going, so that's, I did.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point, Garrett, we should, we should just have two, so good to know. If you're going to be there, Kelly, then either Tim or Lorraine, one of them would have to drop off. Can you, can you? Okay, yeah, if you could text Tim or Lorraine and let them know, I'll be there at five fifty and then whichever one or both need to show up. If you can just communicate that with them, that'd be great. Thank you, Garrett, for bringing that up. Did you have a question on that, Tim?
Yeah, I guess I I thought we were asking for eighty thousand, but um.
Did Kristen explain, so what we have to do from the ballot standpoint, we can't have that language on there.
Is that because we approved the hundred and sixty thousand?
The full amount, so we don't want to invalidate the ballot, so the advice from legal is, we can have that on the flyer, we can talk about it, but the ballot has to remain with full amount that you approved.
Okay. Right, okay.
Yep.
I was just, I was surprised to see that amount, but I understand now why it's got it.
Yep.
And there's no trustee election because Kristen and I were the only two. Correct.
Correct.
Kevin asked, so it was confirming.
I don't have any announcements, uh, do we have any correspondence?
None at this time.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to reconvene in our next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, April twenty-second at twelve fifteen. Our special and then our uh evening one, May thirteenth at six thirty here at Haver Middle School, and that one will have a number of short meetings at the beginning of for cannabis elections and other re- organization of the board, different things like that, so.
We are short one meeting though because we're gonna swear in Kristen and Garrett during the day instead.
So unable to make the meeting on the thirteenth.
Yeah, it'll cut, it'll reduce the time a little bit.
We can do it at, we can do it at lunch, you guys can do it at lunchtime, we don't have to have a meeting. So move, is there a second?
Second.